Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, ready to begin. The Planning Commission meeting is called to a halt.
This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. We're live on KCLV Channel 2, and this meeting will be rebroadcast Saturday at 10:00 a.m., the following Monday at midnight, Tuesday at 5:00 a.m., and Thursday at 6:00 p.m. Would everybody please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please read the roll?
Certainly. Chair Goings?
Present.
Vice Chair Trowbridge?
Present.
Commissioner Trusdale?
Present.
Commissioner Evans?
Present.
Commissioner Steinman?
Present.
Commissioner Dunham?
Here.
Commissioner Quinn?
Here.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to call your attention to the information printed in your agenda concerning our actions and the appeal and review process, if appropriate. Please read this carefully, and if you have any questions, staff is available. Also, the second page of the agenda contains our rules of conduct. We appreciate you adhering to these rules so we can have a smooth meeting. Thank you. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for approval of the August 28, 2008 Planning Commission meeting.
Move for the approval of the final minutes of the Planning Commission meeting of August 28th.
And that motion has been made. Please cast your vote. And that motion has been approved. Let's move on to our housekeeping items. Staff?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Items number 15 and 16, SUP 28989 and SUP 28990, the applicant has requested this to be obeyed to the October 23rd, 2008 Planning Commission meeting. Item number 17 and 18, ZON 29419, SDR 29420, the applicant has requested that these items be withdrawn without prejudice. Items number 22 and 23, variants 29324 and SUP 29323, the applicant has requested these items be stricken. Items number 24 and 25, variants 29412 and SDR 29409, these items have been requested to be held in abeyance to the October 9th Planning Commission meeting. And item number 40, MSP 29350, this item has also been requested to be held in abeyance to the October 9th, 2008 Planning Commission meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, staff. Are there any items that any commissioners would like to have pulled? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion on the abeyance of withdrawal items as read into the record.
I'll be glad to make the motion, but let me get some clarification here first. We're deleting items or pulling from the agenda for various reasons. Items 15, 16, 17, 18, 22, 23, 24, 25, and 40. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Can I make a motion for approval of the agenda as presented and modified?
Motion's on the floor. Cast your vote. And that motion has passed. Moving on to our consent items, items 6 and 7. Consent items are considered routine by the Planning Commission and may be enacted by one motion. However, any item may be discussed if a commission member or applicant so desires. Okay? Anybody have any questions on the consent items, item 6 or 7? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on items 6 and 7.
Make a motion to approve items number 6 and item number 7.
Motion on the floor for approval of items 6 and 7, subject to all staff's recommendation and conditions. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
Item 6 is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days, and item 7 will be forwarded to council on ordinance form.
We'll move on to our one motion, one vote items. Those are items 8 through 14. The following items that may be considered in one motion, one vote, they are considered routine, non-public and public hearing items. All public hearing and non-public hearing items will be opened at one time. Any person representing an application or a member of the public or a member of the Planning Commission not in agreement with conditions and all standard conditions for the application recommended by staff should request to have that item removed from this part of the agenda. Item 8, abeyance, VAC 29235, applicant Barnett Lieberman, owner LV Land Partners, petition to vacate an alley in public access easement at 303 30 East Charleston Boulevard. Item 9, VAR 29441, applicant owner Richmond American Homes of Nevada, Inc., to allow a five-foot front yard setback where 18 feet is required at 6785 Briarwood Bend. Item 10, RQR 29149, applicant Bob Taylor's Ranch House, owner Fletcher Jones Senior Trust, required five-year review of an approved special use permit, U 0035-931, for a 40-foot-high 12-by-5-foot-by-17-by-5-foot off-premise sign billboard at 5501 Drexel Road. Item 11, RQR 29275, applicant owner Cornell Company, owner Rancho Oasis LP, required five-year review on an approved variance, V 0023-95, for two 14-foot-by-48-foot off-premise signs, billboards at 2951 and 2991 North Rancho Drive. Item 12, SDR 29382, applicant El Pollo Loco, owner Walmart Realty Company, major amendment to an approved site development plan, Z 009684-17, for a proposed 2,838 square-foot restaurant with drive-through and a waiver of the perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow a three-foot buffer along the east property line where eight feet is required at 6151 West Lake Mead Boulevard. I'll be corrected, the one motion, one vote items were actually items 8 through 12. Okay?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number 9, please.
Pull number 9. Any commissioners like to have any other items pulled from one motion, one vote? Okay?
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, 3800 Hard Hughes Parkway. If we could hear item number 8 separately, please.
Item number 8. Okay, they're requesting Ms. Lazovich. Item 8 and 9 have requested to be pulled. Therefore, I'll ask for a motion on one motion, one vote, items 10, 11, and 12, subject to all staff's recommendation and condition.
Make a motion for approval of items number 10, 11, and 12, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
Items 10 and 11 go forward to council on November 5th. Item 12 is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the office of the city clerk.
We'll pull item 8. Item 8 has been read into the record, so I'll defer to staff for a report.
Mr. Chairman, the subject vacation was previously approved and has since expired. This is a reapplication for the same exact vacation, therefore staff is recommending approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Jennifer Lazovich, 3800 Hard Hughes Parkway, here tonight representing the applicant. I just wanted to pull this item off the one motion, one vote to clarify and make a couple statements for the record on behalf of an adjacent property owner that we've been working with. The adjacent property owner has the property that runs just south of our vacation right here. Condition number 2 in your staff report, which we are agreeing to, does contain a lengthy list of conditions that we need to do either prior to the vacation being recorded or in particular, we need to draft an access easement, which we are presently working on with her attorney in order to make sure that we can maintain access back in here because this is how they access some of their properties. There is one additional change to condition number 2 that the property owner just indicated. As you see kind of towards the middle of the condition, there is an assessor parcel number which reads 16203110002. We need to also add the parcel number 003. With that, the only other comment I would make is that we're going to be working also with Republic Services to make sure that they maintain the ability to get in there and also be able to pick up the trash that's back here for their property. Again, just statements for the record and the clarification with the parcel number, and we'd ask for you to approve this item.
Mr. Chairman?
So, Mr. Scott?
Would you have Ms. Lazovich to maybe point to 003 just for the record till we know where it's located?
Before we do that, through you, Mr. Chair, is Ms. Lazovich the applicant or the neighboring property owner?
I'm representing the applicant, and this lady who just walked up is the neighboring property owner.
Can you point that out on the map, Ms. Lazovich?
Okay, this is 1113, and this is number 3, and so there's parking here and here.
So it's these two, if you couldn't see the pen, it's this piece and this piece right here. These two parcels.
Would that be the one labeled 1113 and then 1117?
Correct.
Yes, the neighbor indicates that's correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Over here, ma'am.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't have my glasses on.
Not a problem. Thank you. Mr. Trusdale?
Yeah, Mr. Chair. The vacation portion is along parcel 02, right?
That's right. That's right. Yes, correct.
I mean, I guess, I know what the applicant's concerned about is getting to her other parcel, but I'm just confused how we can guarantee access across a parcel sheet, I mean, or the vacation could have a condition like that because...
You mean with the additional parcel number on there?
Right, because it...
Well, perhaps the easier thing to do this, I mean, the entire intent of condition number 2 is to ensure that we provide access back in this area to these two parcels right here, which we're drafting easement agreement to comply with. We can, we could work that out, we could continue working that out before we get to city council. That's an option as well, since this will move forward to the city council, and if that parcel number at that time needs to be included, we can put it in there. We expect to have the easement agreement drafted and completed between the parties prior to the city council hearing, so perhaps that's the better approach.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm sorry.
You're correct.
Real quickly, ma'am, can I have you put your name and address on the record, please?
Sure. My name is Marilyn Oeler, O-E-H-L-E-R, 2115 South Tenaya Way.
Thank you. Go ahead and make your comments to Commissioner Trusdale, and then we'll defer to Bart.
He's correct. If, as long as we can get into the back of 1113, then we have access to the back of 1117. I just didn't need...
Yeah, and I understand, I just, I was very comfortable with the way it was worded, and then when you had the extra part, I'm sitting here trying to figure, did we just confuse it? And, I mean, I think you guys are both in agreement with what you want to accomplish. I just didn't want to confuse the issue as this goes forward.
That's correct.
Thank you. Public Works?
Thank you, Chairman, Bart Anderson, Public Works, and I concur with Commissioner Trusdale. Really adding that parcel number, I think, would complicate or confuse the issue. Technically speaking, that parcel does not currently have access to that alley except through this parcel. Nothing we do will change their access rights through this parcel. So it's really, once we preserve access to the first parcel that currently enjoys it, whatever access they wish to continue to preserve to their neighbor is up to them.
That's correct.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Appreciate those comments.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any more comments or questions from the board?
No. Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion for approval, subject to all staff's conditions. No, we didn't amend it.
Motion on the floor for approval as condition reads today.
Present.
Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed.
Goes forward to council on November 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Item number 9, is the applicant present? Please come forward. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed variance is situated just to one particular lot within this existing, existently mapped subdivision. The proposed setback variance will still facilitate the city's policy in regards to the driveway being either less than five feet or greater than 18 feet in length. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Officer Chavez, 2439 High Vista, in here behalf of the applicant, Richmond American Homes.
Are you in agreeance with all conditions as stated?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody you'd like to speak for or against this item? We'll close the public hearing. Commissioner Steinman?
I'd like to, do you have a layout of that lot, please, and where the house sits?
Yes, I do.
Thanks.
It's lot 5 right here.
Yeah, could they, yeah. Oh, you got it there. Now, I assume the house stops where the solid line is across there with that little square on it, that's the line of the house?
That's correct. That is the face of the garage.
Okay. Can you point that out, Forbes?
No, no, it's not the garage.
Thank you.
No, I'm talking about the rear. Show me the rear house line.
Oh, I'm sorry. The rear line, yes, I see.
Okay. Tell me why that house isn't pushed back at least five feet.
Because it has to be less than five or greater than 18. I cannot have, we cannot have a 10-foot driveway.
I understand that, but it doesn't make a lot of sense in this case. I mean, look what we're doing. We're creating a driveway that's almost nothing, and if we push it back, we at least have something there. And I know that's against your rules and all that, but it just doesn't make a lot of sense here when there's room at the rear of the lot.
If the rear setback is 10 feet, so if we were to push the house all the way back to minimize or to get just 10 feet in the back, the driveway would only be 15 feet.
How many?
15 feet.
That's fine. I'd love that. That keeps people off that street. There's not a lot of places to park there because of curb cuts. There's hardly any places to park there, and in that circle, there's a few. I just think it makes sense to push it back.
If I may, if the commission wishes to do so, you may do so. The 5 and 18 is a policy and is not a code matter.
Then it'll require a subsequent review of condition on the original application because the driveway is required to be greater than 18 feet or no less than...
In the subdivision.
Correct.
I see.
Are you just a developer or the owner?
We're the engineer representing the developer.
The developer, okay.
I only bring it up because I don't think there's, there's places to park on the street right there, and it's going to be a mess in that circle, and we're creating a problem. That's all we're doing, and I think there's an answer to it. Even though it's not 18 feet, it still gives 15 feet, and I suppose the expedition can't fit in that driveway, but some others can.
There is some area to the east on those lots, just to the east, where there's open space, where there is a parking that's allowed on that, on the street, on that open space area. I can point that out, right along here.
Where?
This is an open space area.
Oh, I can't see that.
Okay. If you could zoom into this area right here.
Well, that's my opinion. I'm going to stick to it, and I just think we can create a better situation for this house and the people who own it by having more furniture out there to park vehicles.
One of the issues that comes up with having anything between 5 and 18 is if you do have a vehicle, it's, can stick out onto the street. If you give it to 15 feet or 10 feet, they decide to park in, and in the rear of the vehicle will be sticking onto the street and can cause a hazard, and that's why I believe, one of the reasons why the 5 and the 18 rule is in there.
And I think all those cars parked on the street are more of a hazard. That's my, we're just creating a situation here, and we don't need to do that. Most cars will fit in 15 feet.
The remaining lots are at 18 feet in the subdivision.
Yeah.
So this is a one case.
It's so close together in that subdivision that the curb cuts are really close, and it doesn't give a lot of options for people to park elsewhere. That's my problem with it. Mr. Chairman, through you, just a quick question. If this were to require a review of condition, wouldn't it have to be renoticed? And my question is, will it delay the applicants substantially? And are we talking about one lot or the entire...
We're talking about one lot, and it would, it would delay the permitting and the process to move forward.
And I'm curious about Public Works, what your take on that would be.
Chairman, through you, these are public streets, and as a result, we are uncomfortable with the idea of encouraging someone to park in a driveway that will then block a public sidewalk. If it were private streets, it would be easier to accept, but still, 15 feet, yes, a car might fit in that, but most people don't park with their cars touching their garage door, so they're going to be a couple of feet back. Most cars will then block the public sidewalk for people in wheelchairs or otherwise less mobile, and they then have to go out into the street. We do discourage that, and that's why the policy exists. We will, of course, take your direction, but our recommendation is 5 or less or 18 or more. My personal recommendation is 18 or more.
Okay.
But that's why we have the policy that we have.
Are the sidewalks on this side of the street?
On both sides.
Both sides?
Yes.
Is that right, Mr. Engineer? Is there both sides?
I'm...
I'm not sure.
I'm not sure. I don't think there is on this one.
I don't think there is. That's the issue.
And it could be. If these are private streets, as I say, then it, then it can change.
Okay. Commissioner Trusdale?
I agree with the 5 and, you know, 18. I think that policy has serviced very well in trying to analyze these subdivisions, but I do agree in this case with Commissioner Steinman. It looks like there's open space behind, I mean, it'd be easier to look at giving you a setback variance on the backyard rather than sticking this one house up on the street where everything else is back 18 feet.
Exactly.
So I prefer, in fact, I would support if you came back with the review of condition because I think, I think the neighborhood will be a better solution. Because this is going to look very imposing, show up within a few feet of the street or the sidewalk.
The concern again is that we are within the 5 foot and 18 that was, that is allowed by the code. That's why we came forward with the 5-foot. Coming back for a review of conditions to be able to move the house all the way back to 10 and then allowing something that might be hazardous because it's not only the sidewalk that Mr. Anderson pointed out, it's the fact that your car will be, or the vehicle can be onto, intruding onto the street itself, past the curb, and that's where it would become more hazardous.
That's a very good point, if you have a straight street. This happens to be in a cul-de-sac, half cul-de-sac, and people are going to cut across there, then I could come close to that driveway.
Well, Commissioner, understood, what the knuckle is also designed for, to turn around. So the vehicle doesn't want to go north, and they decide to turn back because they're either lost or in the wrong area, they could clip the car.
Okay.
Chairman, if I may, Bart Anderson, I'd like to clarify my earlier remarks just briefly. If they are private streets, there might not be any sidewalk at all, and therefore any pedestrians would likely already be in the street.
In the street.
And again, if the car is intruding onto the street, it does become a hazard at 15. Now, if it's a smaller car, no, but if it is a larger car, it could be, its rear end could be past the curb area onto the street.
Well, hopefully the people that buy this house will be environmentally sensitive and buy little hybrid cars, and we won't put a Hummer or an Expedition in there.
And if you had to go back to 18, allow 18, how much of a variance would you have to have in the rear setback?
For this particular model, moving it back to get 18 to the front, I would have to have a rear setback at roughly, I think, 7. something.
As opposed to 10.
Correct.
I'd be willing to do that. It makes a lot of sense.
Mr. Chairman, Trowbridge?
Is, you mentioned the particular product that's been selected to go on this model. Does Richmond American have another model that's not as...
No, I believe this is the only one.
The only model Richmond American has?
All the other ones, all the other ones won't fit in the 5-foot and be able to get the rear setback. So the houses are larger, are longer. So if I, even if I put them at 5-foot, the rear would be intruding into the 10-foot setback in the rear.
Of all the models that Richmond American builds...
Well, in this community, no, no, in this community.
I didn't say in the community. But you've got plans that have been approved for a smaller model that's on the shelf.
I would have to check with Richmond to make sure, or to see if they have another model. The way they, the way they've modeled this is it's only for the particular projects.
Are there homes out there already being built?
Excuse me?
Are there homes already out there being built?
Yes.
How about the ones on either side? Have they been notified that they're going to have a parking problem in between them? I wouldn't want to buy either of the houses on either side of this particular unit, and I think it'd only be fair that the people that are potential buyers be notified that they're getting into a bad situation.
They will be notified on the purchase of the house that there will be a 5-foot driveway. I mean, they, you know, they know that that's going to, that's going to happen. It's not where we, they would sell them a house, and then all of a sudden, they're like, where's my driveway?
I have seen that happen where the last house built in the entire development is the one that's got the problem, and the people on the other side are saying, what happened to us? Would you accept as a condition, a requirement that you notify the buyers on either side that they're going to have a 5-foot driveway in between them and the potential impact it's going to have for the entire duration of their ownership?
For the individuals for lots four and...
Yes, or the ones on either side that are going to be so negatively impacted.
If the houses have not been sold and people are not in there already, then they can be a notification.
Maybe they have been built.
I'm not aware. I apologize. I'm not aware of which houses have been built out there.
I want to move for denial on this particular application and hope that you come back with an 18-footer and ask for a seven, two-and-a-half-foot variance in the rear.
Motion on the floor for denial of item 9. Please cast your vote. And that motion for denial has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within 10 days to the office of the city clerk.
Thank you.
We'll now move on to our public hearing items, beginning with item 13, abeyance, renotification, VAR 28916, variance, public hearing, applicant owner Julie Letta Deluna to allow a 14-foot front yard setback for a proposed carport where 20 feet is required at 124 Rancho Vista Drive. Just want to note that this application has been amended to allow a 9-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance in order to renotice and get the correct setback variance. Staff is recommending denial as a self-imposed hardship. Please note that a revised staff report has been submitted as part of your late backup material to reflect the change in setback. Also, we did receive additional protest and support letters.
Thank you. Applicant?
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item inasmuch as my daughter owns a home within the notice area.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name is Mrs. Deluna, and I'm just trying to get that carport in its, what else can I say? You got the, you got the plans, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah. It's just 14 feet by 16, and I just hope that you guys approve it.
Thank you. You're in agreeance with all staff's conditions?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience like to speak for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
If there's no discussion, I'm ready to make a motion.
Would anybody else like to comment on this? Motion on the floor.
In regards to item number 13, variance 28916, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 13. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed with Commissioner Trusdale abstaining.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. Item 14, abeyance, VAR 28974, applicant owner John Moss to allow an existing 23-foot-high 2,080-square-foot accessory structure, Class II batting cage, where an 18-foot-high 1,785 square-foot accessory structure is allowed at 5,100 Grand Teton Drive. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this item was held in abeyance to allow the applicant time to meet with the surrounding property owners. Staff is, finds that this is self-imposed hardship and recommends denial.
Applicant?
Good afternoon. John Moss, 5,100 Grand Teton. I did acquire two signatures. I don't know how to present them. Right here.
You want to tell us a little bit about what your request is?
Well, the request is just to leave the, not have to shorten the batting cage three feet. That's the, that's the, of course, that's the extent of it. feet. That's the extent of it. Now, during the last time I was here, you guys had asked for a... I'm sorry. Am I missing one? It's in the... Oh, I'm sorry, it's right here. You asked for a landscape plan. And I drew one up real quick that would, you know, put trees on the outside of the property there that would eventually come to mask.
Can you put that right on the center of that podium so we can see it?
Have you submitted that to staff, sir?
No, ma'am. I have extra copies with me, but I just did it today. I was working with Councilman Ross's office on exactly how to handle this, and that's what my delays were.
Okay. We can see it.
Essentially, what we have here is, I just essentially pointed out where the trees would be. It's on the outside of the property, on the outside of the wall. That's the property that was given up, that the city vacated, and the trees are about fifteen feet apart.
Okay. Thank you very much.
One last thing. If anyone else had a suggestion on a better way to mask it or to help the problem, I'd be glad to. I've already started the landscaping in lieu of hope that I accomplish this. But if anyone else had any ideas, I'd be open to hear it. I really would like to keep my batting cage.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
Just two questions. The number of the trees, you said they're fifteen feet on center. What types of trees are they?
That's the... I'll hear it says to be determined. I would let you guys pick it. It's... I don't go on that side of the house very often. I don't travel there. So, whatever somebody wanted, you get a pick.
I think that we could ask the planning department to give you the list of recommended trees for the area that will provide an appropriate...
They could just define it on the drawing, and that's what they'll get.
Pomegranate?
There you go. And so it will be.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans?
I know you haven't opened the public hearing yet, but I'm trying to recall, when we were here before, I think I had a question about the property where you proposed to put the landscaping, about who owned it, and you said that the city had vacated it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's already a done deal, and trees can be planted there?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then, I had mentioned the idea of, you know, vines or whatever, or trees, and...
Yes, sir.
I see the way you've drawn the illustrations of where they would be, but I'm not sure they're to scale. And just for future reference, you might want to submit them to the staff so they can review them before they make a recommendation, or to make a recommendation to this body and to ultimately the city council. But I like the idea, but I'd like to hear from the neighbors. And I think that if this were approved, Mr. Chairman, my thought would be that we have a period of review to determine whether or not it's been complied with and whether or not there's any problems. One of the problems that I think we see here is that we approve things like this, and then the trees either never get put in, or they die, or for whatever reason, you know, you end up a couple of years down the road, and the problem still exists.
They get removed, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any more comments or questions from the board?
Yes, sir. I would like to know if we're... What size tree we're putting in? Because the only tree that's going to make any difference along there is probably a thirty-six-inch box tree. Otherwise, it's just going to be a seedling along there. It's not going to do one bit of good.
Well, I understand that they would have to be substantial. I didn't select, as I said, I didn't select the trees. I left it open. Cost permitting, I don't know what the cost on ten thirty-six-inch box trees.
It's a lot.
Yeah, I can't verify whether or not it's cost-effective or not.
Well, it's either that or your batting cage. That's what it comes down to.
If I could, I would, not to beat some landscape architect out of a design fee, but I could... I would speculate that you wouldn't have to have nearly ten trees that were going to have a height of twenty-two feet to provide you adequate canopy. You could probably get away with something more like five. But I would require, or if I were to make the motion for approval, I would make the additional condition that it say very specifically that it have an automated irrigation system and a landscape design scheme that would provide for adequate visual coverage, is what I'm concerned about.
And that's part of it. It's automated. The backyard's automated. I'm trying to be a low water consumption property.
Yeah, you don't want to put in ten...
Hence the reason there's a batting cage in the first place.
Weeding willows, and all of a sudden, your water bed quadruples on you.
Understood. It would be on the sprinkler system that I have.
Mr. Chairman, through you, I would recommend, again, the Mondel pine is relatively drought tolerant. I actually think maybe ten is more than you would require, but I think more than five would, somewhere in between, I think would be a more appropriate number, because the idea is to mask the ugly batting cage, you know? That's the purpose. So, I don't know how we want to handle it.
Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. I think we're going to ask Director Wheeler to probably craft a motion that would probably guide the applicant.
Actually, I was going to make a motion for approval, subject to the applicant submitting or working with staff to revise the landscape plan, acceptable to staff's code and conditions.
Thank you. There's a motion on the floor.
Mr. Chairman, before the motion, maker of the motion, would you consider a period of administrative review?
Yeah, I think that's fair, to make sure everything's done twelve months.
Okay. We're going to... There's a motion on the floor for approval. There's a condition that's going to request that we have a review period, and we'll let Director Wheeler craft that for us.
There will be, one condition will be a one-year review, administrative review of all conditions. The second condition, that a landscape plan shall be submitted prior to the city council meeting, showing thirty-six-inch box trees with automated irrigation system. Type and number of trees are subject to approval of the Department of Planning and Development.
Advocate, you're in agreeance?
Yes, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Before we vote, I asked Mr. Moss to get signatures from the property owners, and he got two. And I just wanted to know what two you got signatures from.
One on the side.
Is that west of you?
Yes, sir.
And then one north of you?
One behind, yeah. Or one south of me, as a matter of fact. Or no, I'm sorry, north. Yeah, one behind me. The truth of the matter is, on that, I was trying not to involve some of the neighbors, because really, this is a kind of a personal dispute, I believe. And the complainer has been really rude to these people, and I just didn't want to involve them. That's...
Well, but that's what we asked you to do, is to contact those folks. But if you got written approval from the property owner due north and due west of you, I guess I'm satisfied enough.
Yes, due north and due west.
All right, thank you.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote. And that has been approved.
And that goes forward to the city council on November fifth.
Thank you, sir.
Maybe have the Yankees over, since they've got nothing else to do.
Absolutely. Doesn't get that much. Thank you so much.
Item nineteen, ROC 29435, applicant owner, I rent B and E LLC, review of condition number three of an approved site development plan review, SD 0041-02, to allow vehicular access to Mesquite Avenue at 520 Northeastern. Companion item, VAR 29437, to allow thirty-three parking spaces where forty spaces are required for an existing commercial development. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the original approved site development plan review, SD 0041-02, approved the site for thirty-nine parking spaces. Since that time, the intensity of uses has increased on the subject site, therefore now requiring a total of forty parking spaces. The subject site was found to be providing only thirty-six parking spaces currently, and therefore not in conformance with the original approval. The proposed review of condition will precipitate the further reduction of required parking on the site by eliminating three parking spaces, hence leaving a total of thirty-three parking spaces on site. If approved, the total onsite parking would constitute an approximate eighteen percent reduction of the current Title X parking standards. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of both applications. Thank you.
Thank you. Advocate?
Good evening, Commissioners. Mike Villapondo, 313 Pilot Road, representing the applicant. The applications that are before you tonight, the review of conditions and variants, stem from the applicant's desire to add a driveway along Mesquite Avenue, Mesquite being the southern boundary and Eastern being the western boundary. Currently, they only have the one driveway off of Eastern, and he would like to install the second driveway off of Mesquite. The desire to do that is driven by two things. One, he recently had the property to the north of him developed, and also a commercial development. And with that development, it restricted the access for public services to be able to get to his trash enclosure. Because of the development, there's now just a one-way driveway through there, and the public services can't go through there and pick up the trash. So, he wants to move that trash enclosure to the southwest side of his property. And obviously, with the trucks coming through, it's nice to have, going through the driveway and then down through Mesquite Avenue, to have that one motion to go through there. The second reason for it is probably the most important reason for it, and that's for safety. Currently only having the one driveway, he's concerned that, you know, having the amount of traffic coming through here, for his customers coming through here off of Eastern, being such a busy right-of-way, that the second driveway would be a nice option to have customers actually go through Mesquite and be able to comfortably get back onto Eastern, rather than sit at the intersection, have cars coming off of Eastern, trying to get through them and, of course, the rest of the driveway.
But you don't think you're putting additional traffic onto Mesquite, which is, looks to be a residential street?
And there would be additional traffic on Mesquite for that, in coming through here. But it would be for simply this, you know, .55-acre commercial development. That would be all that would be coming out of there. Also, the traffic...
And how do you know that?
The... I'm sorry?
How do you know that's all that's going to come out of there?
Well, that would be the only thing that he's servicing with his size of commercial development. My point is, it's not a, you know, twenty-acre commercial development having that much volume. Also, the traffic coming out of the development onto Mesquite would simply come out of the development and go due west. If you go further out to Mesquite, it dead-ends into a cul-de-sac at the end of the block here. So, there would really be only this motion in front of the commercial development, in front of the other existing developments out here as well. Also with this, we had a preliminary meeting with the fire department, and they seem to be positive to the addition of the driveway, obviously, for the reasons of having a fire truck come through here. Having that reverse out, or having it to, getting stuck in here while they're trying to fight an event, is more dangerous than being able to come back around. Obviously, pulling those big trucks back into Eastern is a dangerous maneuver. Now, obviously, with this addition of this driveway, we are eliminating parking stalls. But the owner believes, with the history of his development and the frequency with his customers, that he can operate comfortably with the thirty-three stalls rather than the forty that are required. And with that, I ask for your recommendation for approval, and I'm open for questions.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience who wants to speak for or against item nineteen or twenty, please come forward. State your name and address.
Todd Follow, 240 North 19th Street. That driveway is needed. But this is way overbuilt. The sidewalks are not wide enough here. The people are getting run over at the bus stop. A few years ago, a baby was fall out in the street and got run over by a car when he was in a shopping cart. This is a mess. If this developer developed that project just to the north of him, and then he comes back and tries to squeeze everything in this, it was just done wrong. I mean, he should be held accountable. This thing should have been done in one plan, not two. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from Commissioners? Mr. Truesdale?
I had a couple of questions, because I know this driveway, when this was approved originally, this driveway off of Mesquite was a big issue to the site planning. Here's my concerns. If you're going to encourage traffic to come out Mesquite, they're going to be making rights at the intersection, or at that throat there going onto Eastern, and you've got a short inlet for people to make right turns in because of the traffic flows, we're adding traffic conflicts on public streets where they should be on private streets. That's one concern here. I'm not saying it's an issue. The other item is, you indicated that the trash pickup is one-way, and I guess what is wrong with that? I mean, because I think the need for parking in this development is probably more important than making more convenient deliveries, you know, for trash pickup. So, I'm not in favor of reducing the parking to provide this drive, at least the way it's sit in front of us right now.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Evans?
Maybe the applicant can answer a couple of questions. In the backup materials that we are provided, it said a field check was done about a month ago. And it says, "The southern side of the parking lot currently has no striping for parking spaces. The required landscaping has been removed or is dead along the southern side of the site. Numerous non-permitted temporary signs and banners were noted on the site." Can you address that? I'm always disappointed when we get, you know, we go through a big effort to, you know, allow people to have businesses, and then there are certain requirements that they have to mitigate problems, and then, for whatever reason, we find that it doesn't get done. Can you respond to that, please?
Yeah. Unfortunately, the landscape is a bit depleted along there. But the applicant would definitely look at refurbishing that and putting the landscape...
But didn't they make the commitment back when, when they came in, for the other previous applications? I'm seeing that back, all the way back to, I believe, 2002 or 2003, there have been various applications for this site.
And I would say the commitment was made. And I couldn't speak to, and I can't speak to why it has died, or why the landscaping has been depleted.
Thank you.
Sounds like it says, "I didn't care. We'll pull that up and park some more cars there." Any more comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item nineteen and twenty.
I'll make a motion on number nineteen, ROC 29435. I'll move for denial.
And that motion has passed? Item twenty?
No, that motion was denied.
Yeah, the motion...
Yeah, the thing was denied.
The motion for denial has passed, correct.
Okay. I think I'm with you. Number twenty, VAR 29437, move for denial.
Motion on the floor for denial of item twenty. A yes vote is for the denial. Please cast your vote. And that yes vote for denial has passed as well.
And both items go forward to the city council on November fifth.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item twenty-one, variance 29309, applicant Louis C. Wolf, owner Marvin W. Greenwall, to allow exposed neon signage to be twenty-three feet from a residentially-zoned property, where two hundred feet is the minimum setback required at 4880 North Rancho Drive.
Mr. Chairman, the proposed variance does not allow adequate protection from a residential property for exposed neon, which is not in conformance to Title X. Staff recommends denial of the self-imposed hardship. There are, please note, additional protests received.
Mr. Chair, as this project has not received a final certificate of occupancy, I am engineer of record, so I will have to abstain on this.
Okay. Thank you. So noted. Advocate?
William Graham with Casino Lighting and Sign, 3665 West Diablo, for the owner. If you're familiar with the... What we have already is, we have the annex and the yellow illuminated signs already on the property, approved with a permit. And what we want to do is highlight the edges of the building around the perimeter of the roof line. This building is facing south, more toward Rancho Road than to the east, where the residential area is. And we want to propose that the neon is put on the south, the west, and the north, eliminating neon on the east side of the building, so that it wouldn't be visible from the residential area across the street.
But, Mr. Graham, you can't help but see the building. It just amazes me how the, you know, it's an adult use in there. We may as well be honest about that. But, I mean, you can see it a mile off. I don't know why you got to put neon all around it to say there's adult bookstore and stuff right here. It's been there.
Yes.
This is a public... Are you finished, sir?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Follow, 240 North 19th Street. They put neon in it because I like neon.
I bet I catch you getting off the bus, going in the store.
Well, I don't know about going in the store or not. But what is it, what is the definite problem here? That there's too much voltage, too close to the people? What is...
We defer to staff on that one.
Mr. Chairman, there's a single-family residence located to the east...
Mr. Chairman, there's a single-family residence located to the east of this property. Title 19 prohibits neon, exposed neon, within 200 feet of any single-family residence.
So it's not a safety issue?
No, it's too close to a residence. Thank you. We'll close the public hearing, and it comments a question from the board.
Just a correction, Mr. Chair. I note on the screen, it is showing that the, it is Ward 3. I believe it's Ward 6.
That is correct.
So the operators can make that change.
It says Ward 3. It's actually Ward 6.
It is Ward 6, properly noted on the agenda. Thank you.
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
No further discussion. I'm ready to make a motion.
Motion on item 21?
Make a motion for denial of variance 29309.
Motion on the floor for denial of item 21. Please cast your vote. And that motion for denial has passed.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within 10 days.
Thank you. Item 26 through 28. Item 26, VAR 29428, applicant owner Robert D. Lawson, to allow an eight-foot rear yard setback where 15 feet is required, to allow a two-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required, and to allow a 40-foot setback where residential adjacency standards require 50 feet at 1148 South Maryland Parkway. Item 27, VAR 29430, to allow seven parking spaces where 11 are required. Item 28, SDR 29426, for a proposed 3,132 square foot, two-story professional office with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer requirements, to allow a zero-foot buffer on the east property line where 15 feet is required, a six-foot buffer on the south property line where 15 is, feet is required, and a zero buffer on the west property line where five feet is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed development-
Oh, excuse me. I'll have to abstain on this because this is, I'm related to the applicant.
Thank you. You want to care to say hi? I think we've-
Mr. Chairman.
-set the happy home. Staff?
The proposed development of the current, currently vacant subject site requires multiple waivers of landscape buffer requirements, as well as variances for setback requirements, residential adjacency standards, and parking standards. As such, the applicant has demonstrated that the site is being overbuilt and therefore has created self-imposed hardship, which staff cannot support. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of both variances, applications, and the associated site development plan review. Please note, additional letters of protest have been received for this item. Thank you.
Thank you. App applicant?
Good evening, Director Wheeler, Chairman Goines, and Commissioners. My name is Stephen P. Quinn from Precision Construction. I'm here with the owner, Robert Lawson, of Robert Lawson Investigations, and we're before you this evening to ask for your approval of this project, which is going into a historic neighborhood in which nothing has been built in quite a long time. Mr. Lawson made a conscious decision to come in and tear this property down in lieu of putting his office in an existing house and having cars park on what used to be front lawns. That's going on along Maryland Parkway right now, and it's a historic neighborhood, and he doesn't want to keep that. He's coming in right now, and he wants to raise the bar in this neighborhood, and we met with representatives of the West Hunt Ridge Neighborhood Association, Mr. Lance Kirk and Mr. Mike Brown, along with Commissioner Evans and Chairman Goines, and everybody requested that we install deciduous trees in lieu of palm trees to keep the character of this neighborhood the way it was 25, 30, 30 years ago, and to keep it with that nice tunnel effect along Maryland Parkway. Staffs report that we've created a self-imposed hardship, but we find that that's a tough pill to swallow here. I'd like to pass these handouts to the commissioners to take a look. We've done an overlay as to the property. If we were to follow Title 19 and stay with all the setbacks that are required, we'd only have, on this piece of property, we'd have 2,894 square feet, as you can see on the overhead, of buildable area, including our parking spaces and circulation. Title 19 also grants us an exception to this due to the, with the strict, the strict variance, due to the shape of the property. It has the east property line as not parallel with the west property line. Staff states that an alternative site design would solve this problem, yet the site plan handed to you doesn't support this. When you look at it, I mean, we could only put a building in the back and four parking spaces, yet we wouldn't be able to turn around or come in and park. This property is challenged due to its shape. As far as parking, parking as we've grown up to know is no longer that way. Mass transit, especially along this corridor, is the new way that we're going. To address something with Public Works, the existing driveway there, I would not be able to put in a, the large driveway, but to stay with the size of the existing driveway that's there, because there's no way I'd be able to get in the driveway on Jessica. Not compatible with the neighborhood was another of staff's concerns. This property is compatible with Maryland Parkway. It's not in the neighborhood. It's on Maryland. We met with the Neighborhood Association. Staff has mentioned that we had some protests. There were no protests from the Neighborhood Associations, not one. There was one letter of approval, which staff didn't mention, yet there were two oppositions. One was a person that lived on the block, and the other one was somebody in the valley. I have no idea where they're from. Public Works also addressed the traffic capacity with this project, that we're going to add 1,686 trips per day, and I just can't see how we can add 1,686 trips per day. This is going to be an owner-occupied office with possibly two small businesses being in there, both owner-occupied, and as long as they're owner-occupied, we know that the standards are going to remain high at all times, because the owners, the owner will be there as long as another possible attorney. Right now, Mr. Lawson plans on keeping it as one, a one person, or one firm building, but in the event that he downsizes, he could always rent it out to a single attorney with a paralegal, and he'd be in good shape.
What type, Mr. Quinn, what type of business is going to be there?
Private investigator. And the employees that have, that work for him, they want to be shadows. They don't want to come around and park their cars and be all over the place. They're, they're hidden. You never see them. If you've been followed, and believe me, I have some experience here, you never know they're following you.
I'm from the hood. I turn at every corner. I know if I'm being followed. I'm from Ward 5.
Just to bring up one more item for the public record, even though it's not part of our application, the sign that we have on our application is 10-foot high. The sign ordinance allows us to go 10-foot high as long as we have more than 100 feet of frontage. We have 101 foot of frontage. At that point, we're allowed to go 10-foot high. If we were less than 100, we'd have to remain at 8 feet high. The sign's not part of our application right now, but I just want to get it on the record so it'll lay the date two years from now, that we don't have to come back before you to ask for a little bit bigger sign, that it's over and done with right now. When we come to do the sign, it's across the counter, and it's a done deal. Thank you. Yes.
Any comments? Thank you.
And if you have any questions for the owner, this is Robert Lawson.
Mr. Lawson, welcome.
Thank you.
Would you like to say anything?
No, I pay him enough money. He does.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience for or against this item, please come forward. There are two microphones.
240 North 19th Street. There's projects in this neighborhood that are really super nice. There's an insurance firm down there and a law firm that did a beautiful job, and some of them are garbage. I have a feeling that this is going to be really nice, and if it isn't, I can tell Mr. Lawson, I'll be setting across that street in the park throwing rocks at it. Thank you.
Thank you. We're just keeping an eye on him, Mr. Follow.
Hi, owner, messenger, 1301 Francis. I live across the street, and I've known the previous owner for 28 years, the Fleming family. Know the building real well. Know the lot real well. I walked the neighborhood for 25 years, every day for exercise. There's not a two-story building on either side of Maryland Parkway from Charleston, past Gorman, the old Gorman, past the church, up past St. Louis. Fine. Two stories I'm concerned about is the privacy of the people that live behind it. These are old, old residential lots. I live in the neighborhood. I was never contacted. I got the variance, or I got the notice, but I think it's just out of place, period. You allowed an existing building across the street, the Castro Verde Law Office. You allowed them to move in. They did a gorgeous job. They only have four parking places, one handicap and three regular. Five of the cars park every day on Francis, no problems, and the rest on Jessica. There's more than one attorney. They got a whole law office there. The only beef we have is on Wednesdays when the street gets swept, but to allow less parking, it's ridiculous. There's nobody that just one or two people use an office. When you gave them that price at 11:49, there are just four little parking places. They did a gorgeous job in redoing the building. It was an existing building with existing parking. I just think it's out of place. I mean, I never left the neighborhood. I had a chance to leave a long time ago. I have a T-shirt that says, "Akeem Akado." It says, "Here I stay." I'm staying, but I don't think this belongs there. I mean, I still look at the house that Mr. Bryan was raised in on the corner. It's still a one-story building. Thank you.
Are you closer to Maryland Parkway?
I'm five houses off Maryland Parkway. Yeah, but I owned a business at 1124 South Maryland Parkway. I was two miles from them. I had a retail business for 20 some odd years. I mean, I've been in the neighborhood, worked in the neighborhood, and had business in the neighborhood. You know, I take a personal interest with my neighbors about everything that goes on there. I'm just coming about this right now because I just think it's out of place. I walk every day down Maryland Parkway. I have, there's not a two-story building there. Think about it. There's nothing up to St. Louis, past the churches. There's, go to, you can go to Sahara. There's not a two-story building on Maryland Parkway, and these are the original lots. There were in Hunt Ridge 1 and Hunt Ridge 2. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Would anybody else like to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll give the applicant a chance to respond to some of the comments.
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry for not catching the constituent's name right here, and to address his concern with a two-story building, this is not a two-story building. This is a one-story building. One story is subterranean. It's below ground, six feet below ground. The portion of the building that is perceived to be two-story actually fronts on Maryland Parkway, and there is a residential proximity plan that we have met to where this building is, if you were to take a residential home and measure it right at its ridge line where the highest point of a single-family residence is, this building is just as high, possibly lower than a single-family residence home that has a 412 pitch roof. So it's not a two-story building. It's a single-story building, and the portion of the building that appears to be, here would be the portion of the floor that's a little bit higher, that faces Maryland Parkway, and nothing faces the neighborhood. Nothing, I can't say, well-
Do you have a rendering of what the west portion of that would look like?
Yes, I do.
Which would be to the nearest resident going up Franklin West?
The plan that I'm seeing, that I have right now on the overhead-
Or Jessica, I'm sorry.
This side right here is Maryland Parkway. This is Jessica, straight ahead. This is the house next door, right here. This right here is 10 foot, 12 feet high, right here, and the house next door is quite a bit taller than 10 feet high. Because the ceiling height in a home is eight foot, and by the time you take a 412 pitch roof, you're going to be somewhere at 13 feet plus, right at the ridge line at the highest point of the house.
Very good. Thank you. Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
I have a couple of questions. My concern appears to be easily resolved, and my concern is the proximity to Maryland Parkway, 2 and 1/2 feet. That just seems real close, and the reason is because it appears to have an easy solution by simply moving the building over closer to the property to the west. You know, we've got 10 feet there that appears to be a, what's going to wind up being a landscape issue, and if you move the building over a little bit, you've eliminated that landscape issue. You've got more space on the other side to give you a much more attractive entrance. And then I would also be interested in hearing if you've contacted the adjoining properties, the two to the west and the one to the east, and if they have objections. So other than that, I can support the request.
If I may, Chairman and Vice Chair, I believe, and I want to check with staff on this, if the building were to move to the west, then the residential adjacency variance would be greater than is noticed, correct?
That is correct.
Yes, so if you, you're, if I'm understanding, your idea would be to make the variance on the east smaller, but were you to do that, you'd make the variance to the west, the residential adjacency variance, larger, and that has not been noticed. So that would require re-noticing the matter, because that variance is more than is what has been noticed for this evening.
I understand. What do you think?
Well, to address your concerns, and we thought of that also, and we did have it moved over, and if you take a look at the site plan right here, we already have a very significant setback already from the sidewalk that's 10 feet to the property line that's already been granted. And as we move more and more into a metropolis versus a small city, quite a few of the buildings in any large city are right there on the property line. Yet we're still going to have on the east, from the east corner of this building, the 2 and 1/2 feet in from the property line, we still have 10 feet plus of landscaping along here, so we're going to have 12 and 1/2 feet of landscaping there. And Mr. Lawson, he'd like to make a comment as far as one of the owners are concerned.
Please.
Thank you. When I purchased this piece of property, I spoke to Mr. Fleming and Mrs. Fleming, the owners of the property, and-
Can you pull that mic over, kind of sneak it? There you go. Very good.
And prior to contacting Mr. Quinn and the architect, I spoke to the lady, I guess, of your west. The property that's actually behind it, it kind of borders two pieces of property. I wasn't, I wasn't able to get to the one person, but the one building is actually a commercial building now, some sort of a professional building, and it's boarded up. But I did speak to the Flemings, and they were really concerned about how it was going to affect the neighborhood, and I did present them drawings prior to investing any money in it, and they seemed pretty happy with how it looked, and they felt that it fit in with the theater that's near there. I think it's the Hunt Ridge Theater.
Yes.
And I asked if they had spoken to any of the other neighbors, and apparently they've lived there quite a, quite a few years, 42 years, and they seemed very happy with the project. And when I did speak to Mr. Quinn about that, he said that's one of the things that we needed to do was go talk to the neighbors, and eventually he met with the association. And our goal there is not to change the neighborhood. It's not to increase a lot of traffic. I'm a private investigator. We do a lot of quarter-pointed work. I presently have four employees working for me that are investigators. I have one who is an investigator, office manager. Our foot traffic, if I could get 1,600 people in there a month, hey, I would, I'd buy a different piece of land, because I need the room.
Mr. Chairman?
We do want to make, you know, we want to make the neighborhood better in anything that we can do.
So let me see if I-
Commissioner Evans?
Yes. You don't have any substantial neighborhood opposition, and the people that are immediately impacted by this don't have a problem with it. Is that, is that correct?
Well, to my knowledge, but, you know, obviously, we, you know, we did meet, well, I should say, Mr. Quinn brought it to my attention that they were concerned about the landscaping, and if it's not a, I guess, I don't want to make a big hardship on me, but if, you know, there's little- know, there's little things that we can do. They want other trees besides palm trees, I'm all for that. Anything, you know, we just want it to look really nice.
Right.
It's a small business.
And let me just, I, if I can, Mr. Quinn, you, you said you met with Mr. Kirk, who was, I think then, the head of the West Circle Neighborhood Association, is that correct?
Yes, the West Huntridge Neighborhood Association.
Right, I think they changed the name.
And to answer your question, the property that is to the north is zoned right now, if I'm not mistaken, it's a commercial property that's zoned, it's not professional, it's zoned commercial. The property to the west right now is a derelict, single-family residence. The property to the south, it would be nice if I could say it was a derelict, single-family residence because it's the next one down from that. So I don't know what that term would be.
But there, in terms of the neighborhood group, there's no substantial opposition?
No, we had, with staff's report, that they failed to mention is that every neighborhood, 15 neighborhood associations were met, if you look at your backup.
Right.
And not one neighborhood association had a problem with this project.
Okay. And I was looking at the landscaping because, and as a matter of disclosure, I met with Mr. Quinn and, and had suggested that he reach out to some of the people in the neighborhood, knowing that likely if there were issues, they could be resolved. And you did the building, if I'm not mistaken, on Rancho, which would be south of Charleston. And I can't remember the name of the development...
I've done quite a, I've done many buildings around the valley that are less successful.
No, I know, but that, that one in particular was the one that I mentioned, where you've got the berm and everything, and it's just an outstanding job. The thing about this area, and I think everybody would agree, you know, it's, you know, it's a fragile area, and we have a vacant lot. There's a lot of issues with homelessness in there and vagrancy. And I think this development will probably well serve that circle. So my thought is, and with all due respect to Mr. Owen Messenger, I believe, who lives, I think, on Francis, I would agree with him about the Castro Verde Law Office across the park. And there's another one, I think it's Mr. Tillman's offices. They've done remarkable jobs with the landscaping, and I have every confidence, Mr. Quinn, that you will as well. So if there's no more discussion, my motion would be for approval of Agenda Item Number 26, the variance. I think the setback, a good argument has been made, and my motion would be for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 26, please cast your vote.
Mr. Chairman, I did have a question.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Truesdale?
It's a great-looking building. I want to tell you, I like the building, I like the idea you put it on the ground. I do have a question for Public Works. The driveway, the way it comes in, right at, right at the corner, is, is that something that you guys looked at, that you're comfortable with?
We have looked at it, and Condition Number, let's see here, 15, addresses the driveway, and it does make the recommendation that they put in a pan-style driveway rather than a radius one. And I'd like to take this opportunity maybe to delete the, the first sentence of that condition requiring a deviation from the normal radius standard, and just state at this meeting that the pan driveway will be fine. So we delete the first sentence of that. But there's really no other place to, to put it that will obey all of the requirements that we have for distance from a lot line and that sort of thing. So while it's certainly not the ideal situation, we have looked at it, and it is acceptable as they've shown it, as long as it's a pan-style driveway.
Just, just to be clear, because we're, we're talking about waiving some parking, and we want to at least be responsive to the neighbors there.
Commissioner Truesdale, we've looked at this very hard, and our concerns are the same as yours with the parking. And I'd be willing to work with staff as to, we're going to do as much as we can do with the drive approach that we need there, even if we come in with a size that's a foot out of difference, a little bit bigger than a nominal size, and we, whatever we can make work there, we're going to go with. Because we can't put our drive approach on Maryland Parkway, it has to happen on Jessica. And we will, we, we looked at, another thing that staff has mentioned, that if the employees or if we do have overflow parking that goes out onto Jessica, we welcome code enforcement to come by and ticket those vehicles, and we have no problem with it. Worst-case scenario for us would be 100 yards away, there's a commercial shopping center that is in excess of 500 to 1,000 parking spaces there that sit vacant right now. And we could always, if we had to, need be lease a couple of spaces from them if the need ever arose.
Thank you. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the previous comment made to the signage, take it, this is in regards to a monument sign?
Yes.
Please. The totals, Title 19.14 states that, that, let's, one monument per, per street frontage. This particular property has two street frontages, one which equals 92.19 linear feet, and the other which equals 46.79. And if you split the radius, the, the street frontage along Maryland is still 98.69, therefore does not meet the 100-foot requirement, which would allow it to exceed the height requirement to 10 feet.
That's, you know, not a big issue. I actually measured it with the tape out there, so there's, there's a bus somewhere in the measurement.
I'm, I'm lost, I don't know what...
I just wanted to clarify, there was a previous comment on the record that, in regards to proposed signage, which is not a part of this review, that he would be allowed to have a 10-foot sign. But based on the assessed parcel map, and for linear street frontage, the sign would be restricted to eight feet until...
But we're not voting on a sign, is that correct?
That's correct.
No.
This is just clarification on the record.
Okay, thank you. We can just visit, visit once more.
It'd be my pleasure.
Are we ready for a motion?
Mr. Truesdale, are you all your comments? You're good, okay. Commissioner Evans, you did offer a motion for approval on Item 26.
Yeah, and I, Mr. Anderson, I'm not sure with the modification of the condition, was that on the variance or the site development review?
It would, it would be on the SDR for Condition Number 15, so not on the motion that you currently have.
Okay, so I think, I think there was a motion on 26 for approval.
Correct. Please cast your vote on Item 26. That motion has passed with Commissioner Quinn abstaining. Item 27?
Item Number 27, where we're allowing seven parking spaces where 11 are required, I think that the applicant, given that they're a private investigative firm, you know, I just don't see where that would be a substantial problem. I hope I'm correct, but I would agree with Mr. Quinn. If you go right around the corner to the old Huntridge Tavern and the drugstore, there are a bazillion spaces that, I don't know, you know, I've never seen anybody park somewhere like that and walk a half a block, but it certainly seems reasonable in another city. So my motion would be for approval of Agenda Item Number 27.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 27, please cast your vote. That motion has passed with Commissioner Quinn abstaining. Item 28?
And on Item 28, my motion would be to, for recommendation of the site development review, motion for approval with the modification, I believe, of Condition Number One as read into the record. I think you had deleted a portion of Condition One.
Condition Number 15, delete the first sentence.
First sentence.
And I would also, not to the motion, but acknowledge the, the misprint that they identified where we say that it's 1,686 trips per day, the actual number is 34. I was apparently sleeping when I reviewed that, I apologize. But the body of the report itself is correct, all of the percentages that we acknowledge are based on the 34, we just slipped in that wrong number at the very end.
Correction, so noted.
And Commissioner Evans, just to get it that I could work with Public Works on that drive approach, whatever we need to do, we're, we just don't need to come back and belabor six inches to a foot.
Very good.
Thank you.
So motion would be for approval with the revision of the condition, the deletion of a portion of a sentence as read into the record by Mr. Anderson.
Please cast your vote. That motion has passed, showing Commissioner Quinn abstaining.
All matters go forward to City Council on November 5th.
Mr. Chairman? And just for clarification on the extension, the Commissioner Quinn is related to the applicant's representative, not the applicant himself, so, just for the record.
Correct.
Every, every time you keep saying Commissioner Quinn, I keep looking up.
Can't we just say she runs the house?
She runs the house.
Thank you very much.
You agree with that, Commissioner Quinn?
Yes, I would.
Thank you. Item 29 through 31, they're related items. Item 29, VAR 29443, applicant owner ECT Holdings, to allow 136 parking spaces where 158 are required, and to allow one loading zone where two are required at 1208 East Charleston Boulevard. Item 30, VAR 29494, to allow a 15-foot front setback where 20 feet is required, and to allow a zero-foot corner-side building setback where 15 feet is required. Item 31, SDR 29440, for a proposed 39,420 square-foot commercial development, which includes 14,320 square feet of new construction with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow a 10-foot buffer along the north property line where 15 feet is required, to allow a 5-foot buffer along the west property line where 15 feet is required, to allow a 3-foot buffer along the east property line where 8 feet is required, and to allow a waiver of the building placement standards. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed project does not conform to Title 19. As such, the, we recommend denial of the, of all associated applications. Please note additional protests were received after the backup, after the printing. Also, staff would like to note that in your backup material, there are some additional renderings of the second-story area. That is for just reference points and are not part of the approved plans for reference to Plan Check.
Thank you. Apple?
Good evening, Jennifer Lasovich, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway, here tonight on behalf of the applicant for this project. A little bit of background on the Huntridge, because for any of you who have lived in the Las Vegas Valley for some period of time are familiar with the Huntridge, and certainly as a movie theater, which is how it was originally constructed. The owner of the property acquired the Huntridge right around 2001. And at that time, his idea for the property had been to open it as a concert venue and operate it that way. He did do that for some period of time. Unfortunately, he found it difficult to compete with some of the newer, yet smaller venues that do currently exist on the Strip. Since that time, he's really trying to figure out how best to make this project work on this location, both from a redevelopment standpoint of the existing Huntridge Theater, as well as maybe just more of a redevelopment of that entire corner, which is on Charleston and Maryland Parkway. In order to do that, he's determined that he needs 40,000 square feet of retail in order to make that work. And so if you can turn your attention to the overhead, please. This gives you a rendering of what the proposed redevelopment of the Huntridge would look like. In the background is the existing Huntridge Theater. You probably recognize it most by the sign right here, and in a minute I'll put up a little bit better rendering so you can see the sign. The two new buildings that we would be adding would be right here and also right in this location. This particular building would have a combination of retail and a restaurant with a possible drive-through right here. With regard to the Huntridge, the idea is to put retail in along this first floor, and then on the second floor, you can kind of see some darker areas, that would actually be windows and would intended to be used for office space. So we would have some office space right above our, our retail location in the Huntridge Building, the actual Huntridge Building. And in terms of the applications that are before you tonight, we have a couple of variances and then our site plan review. So I'll show you the... There's our site plan. The variances largely come from, I should say they all entirely originate from the fact that we are dealing with an original condition, it's kind of dark and hard to see. We're dealing with an original condition, which is the existence of the historic Huntridge Theater, as well as the couple of other buildings that wrap around on Maryland Parkway. That drives a need for a lot of the variances and the waivers that we're asking for tonight. Obviously, we are adding additional buildings up here, but as I've indicated, when I first started the presentation, we need that in order to get to a retail square footage area to make this entire project work. With the parking variance, we are short about 14 spaces total from what were required. That represents a 14% reduction, and we think that that is a reasonable variance request because we have an actual bus turnout and bus stop right on our property along Charleston Boulevard. I know that, that you all are very familiar with that neighborhood that is located south of the Huntridge, and they do walk a lot over in that neighborhood. So we do believe we'll get some foot traffic, as well as if anybody wants to get here on the bus line on Charleston. Both of those mean that I think that the variance will not put us in a position, or any of our customers coming to use the retailer office in a position where they won't be able to find parking. We think we've satisfied the parking needs in terms of what the uses are that are going to actually be there. Now, there's going to be some parking south of the Huntridge as well as north of the Huntridge. For those of you that, that have been in the Huntridge Theater, you'll know that there's a lobby area, it was the lobby area for the concession stand originally, and that's right here. There will still be access into the Huntridge Building from back here. So we anticipate we'll get some employee parking on the south end, and then majority of the customers would probably park on the north end. So I think that that kind of breaks up the parking a little bit. With respect to the landscaping, we have asked for a couple of waivers. Again, some of it is because of existing conditions along Maryland Parkway, the building actually comes right up to the sidewalk, that's an existing condition. However, we would be adding landscaping back here along the alleyway, as well as additional landscaping along the perimeter, along Charleston and Maryland Parkway. And we've asked to not put landscaping in the actual parking lot, in other words, fingers, parking lot fingers, with landscaping, because we knew it would then mean that we'd have to request a higher parking reduction, because the landscaping would take up some of the parking spaces. But what we did do is take the number of trees that we would have to disperse throughout the parking lot and move them to the perimeter of the site. So just to give you an idea, we have a 72 trees total that would be planted within the site, again, that's along the perimeter, and some of these green areas in the parking lot, but mostly along the perimeter. And of the 72 trees that we're planning on planting, 11 of those would be palm trees. You'd predominantly see the palm trees along Charleston, right in this area, kind of right We have met with a group that, some of them are here tonight to speak. They've called themselves the Save the Huntridge Theater Group, and they will be here to speak, but I, so I don't want to necessarily speak for them. But they were kind enough to work with the owner of the property for quite some time. They have seen the renderings that are before you tonight, and they, I don't want to speak for them, but they were very, very positive about what the Huntridge looks like in its present design, about keeping the Huntridge, and about understanding the need to add the additional retail to make Saving the Huntridge actually work. We did try to match, this is known as a modern style of architecture, and with these kind of taller elements right here, we did try to tie that into the existing Huntridge Theater on the new building. So we did try to give all of the buildings a modern look, like the existing Huntridge Theater already looks now. We do have a letter of support from the Nevada Department of Cultural Affairs. I believe that's in your backup, but I will also turn one in for the record, but it is supporting the redevelopment of the Huntridge, as we've shown you this tonight. And then a couple of other additional things that I'd just like to perhaps offer to the Commission tonight. One is that, as you come down Maryland Parkway, okay, that is a terrible, terrible, terrible joke, if it's true, that Oregon is actually beating my USC Trojans 21 to 0. I don't want to hear the review back there. Well, now I don't know what to, you know, I'm just completely screwed up now. Well, a couple of things that we'd like to offer to the Commission is that, as you come down Maryland Parkway, because we have this existing condition where the building actually comes right up to the back of the sidewalk, it does create a little bit of a hidden driveway here. Again, these driveways are existing today, but we would offer to put in a sign on our property that would be just to the south of the edge of the building, kind of over, right by the alley, but again, still on our property, that might say, "Hidden Drive." We'd like to work with your traffic engineer on, on the location to, to put that in, and also what it should say that would properly give notice that there is a driveway coming up. it should say that would properly give notice that there is a driveway coming up. Additionally, we could provide additional palm trees. We do want to keep visibility to the center, to the tenants, in a clean way, along Charleston and Maryland Parkway, but again, we're already providing 11 of palm trees. We'd be happy to do more if the Commission thinks that some additional landscaping along Maryland Parkway or Charleston would be necessary with some palm trees. And then finally, with the Huntridge sign, it's our intent to kind of uplight it so that there's some lights, if you can, that kind of would shine up onto the Huntridge Theater because I think, and I've lived in Vegas long enough to know that, I personally think that that's really the icon of the Huntridge Theater, is the sign itself. So it's our intent to try to put some lights up to kind of not bleed into the neighborhood, but uplight the sign itself so that you kind of get some recognition from the Huntridge Theater sign. And then finally, one other thing that the owner is willing to do, as I mentioned before, the lobby is going to stay in existence. Will be slightly reconfigured because we have to go in there and add in the second floor for the office. But we think it would be a great idea if we put in some perhaps framed, black-and-white photos of what the Huntridge looked like in the past, just in the lobby area, just to give it a little bit of, some nostalgic feel. And again, that's something that the owner has indicated he'd be willing to work on, and he's got to find the pictures and stuff like that. So with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that don't involve why the Trojans are losing to Oregon State by 21 points.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask, you know, what's the difference between modern and perhaps art deco? Or you could answer the question, what's the third building for?
What's the...
Building three, Building C on your drawing. Yeah, there you go.
Building C?
Yes.
It's just additional retail. To answer your question, if, what's it for?
It's not going to be a C store?
Oh, no.
Or a bar?
No, it's meant to be retail right now. That's all that's before you. On the comment about the bar, I have heard, and again, I don't want to speak for the neighbors, but I, some of the feedback we've gotten at the Save the Huntridge meeting was that they actually might like to see some type of bar use there, but that's not before you tonight. Right now, it's just proposed as straight retail.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience who wants to speak for or against this? Please come forward.
Thank you. You're with me tonight. Owen Messinger, 1301 Francis. I live right behind the Huntridge Theater, and I'm representing nine of the homeowners on Francis, five that live directly and four that live down the block. I'll be real honest with you, I have never been included in any program that these owners ever wanted to go through from many, many years ago. The fact that I'm here is, I want to bring it back to the record, and I think Mr. Evans could verify this. These owners have been noncompliant with the city for many, many years. When they had SEMA Furniture, they were noncompliant to the city's request for signage. Never cared, just didn't care, only when they want something. This is a two-way street. They've never recognized the city of Las Vegas as being a two-way street. And I'm on a first-name basis with both owners, Eli and his father, Aaron, and I go and talk to them. I've never had any problems with them. But our big problem was the noncompliance, and they're on record, that when they first went in for a concert license, they were supposed to be compliant and provide lot security for the original five homes that were behind because after the concerts were over, the party used to go to 2:00, 3:00 in the morning. First concert, nothing. Second concert, nothing. Third concert, nothing. The fourth concert, I asked them, he says, "Well, we're not making any money. We can't afford security." I happened to call the city attorney, who was sitting at the council meeting that day, and that was Tom Green, who has retired right now to Wyoming. He says, "Duty noted." He said, "I've put it in the record. I understand what you're saying, and just remember one thing. At some time later in the, they're going to have to come to the City Council and ask for something." We have it written down that they've been noncompliant, but they were noncompliant when they owned 1,200. More than anything else, we went and got the site plan. I've sat for four days with the residents directly behind, now I'm talking Francis Avenue. I'm there 28 years. One of my neighbors is there 52 years. We've been there. We've seen it all. What we're having a problem with is when I asked, I went to planning, and a planning officer sat down and spent an hour with me explaining what is going on, what they're requesting. And I said to him, "Well, how many square feet are they requesting that they need in addition, that they're asking for variances?" He said, "If they were to follow the plan, they wouldn't have Building C." "Oh, okay, fine." We are against giving them anything. We wish them well. It's money, it's their money. Let them enjoy it. Play the game. If you people say they have to have something, we want it. We don't want any variance. The bottom line is, my neighbor said, and he summed it up real good, he said, "This is Main Street, not Wall Street. They want an economic bailout, and that's it." We're third choice. My state assemblyman called me, James Orangeall, and he told me verbatim what went on in the meeting in Carson City. And I don't have to repeat what went on, but this is a third choice. We wanted something better. We didn't care what they were going to do. If they would've come five years ago and showed you this plan, maybe we would've showed a little something. But we, this is third choice. The bottom line is, let's be honest, they wanted to flip this property. They never had a business model. Richard Lentz, the original owner of the property, said, and he said it real nice, after he signed over his other building, the old post office, and he gave it to him. He said, "Owen, I'm going to be honest with you, they have no business plan, they have no business model, they just want to sell it." And I said, "Good luck to them. Let them do what they want to do. It's their money." We never opposed it. Business is business. But when they come before you now, we want you to know that they've been noncompliant, and this is the five owners that live directly behind them, not somewhere in the neighborhood, not some group. We've never been included. He'll never come to me and ask me what he's going to do because he knows. But we are on record that they were noncompliant twice, and Mr. Evans knows it about the signage because him and I have discussed it many times over the years, what he's gone through and what a sore sight it's been for everybody. Bottom line is, that's it. We will give them nothing.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Brian Paco Alvarez. I'm at 801 Las Vegas Boulevard South. I'm a Las Vegas native. I appreciate your time to speak. I also represent the Save the Huntridge Group, or a group of citizens that came by, came around several months ago when we had heard a rumor that the Huntridge was going to be torn down. I threw concerts at the Huntridge more than 10 years ago, and I've been involved at the Huntridge on and off when it was a concert venue and also a music, or different types of music venue. We were very, not optimistic, but we were very upset when we heard that Eli, or the rumor that Eli wanted to tear down the building. And we began to form a group, to begin the discussions, to see how we can approach Eli and what kind of consensus we can come to save this building. Eli was very frank with us. He was very kind. He met with us, and he came up with an idea. And knowing the economic times that we are in right now, we saw the plan as a way of saving this building, as an adaptive reuse. We know that as a theater, it will not work. I know that for a fact. It will not work as a theater. There is just too much competition in this town. We saw the plan. It saves the building. It saves the spirit of the neighborhood, and it's an economic injection into what is a depressed area of our community. I only live half a mile west of this neighborhood. I would like to see this theater or this property developed as he sees it. And on behalf of the Save the Huntridge Group, we hope that you will support Mr. Mizrahi in his project. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, ma'am.
Pam Hartley, 1700 Beckford, number 206. I've been here many, many times, talking about projects that weren't compatible with our neighborhood, and I'm really happy to be here tonight to say that I just think that this is a wonderful, wonderful adaptive reuse of a beautiful old building. And I'm really, really pleased I've had the opportunity to work with Mr. Mizrahi. I think he really stepped up to the plate with this. He met with the neighbors. We had a neighborhood meeting, and he listened to us. He has had a lot of problems with the building. He initially wanted to have the covenants removed. He's no longer seeking to have those covenants removed. He's keeping the entire building intact. He just wants to add to it, enhance it, and make it economically viable. I think, again, it will inject new life into that area, which we need desperately, and it keeps the building. So I wholeheartedly support it. I was also part of the Save the Huntridge. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. Yes, ma'am.
Mary Joy Alderman, 1550 Bracken Avenue. I'm a native Las Vagan, born here in the 1940s. As a child, I went to the Huntridge Theater almost every Saturday, and I have lived in the neighborhood for over 44 years. Seeing it vacant for the past several was not pleasant. I'm thrilled with the proposal presented by Mr. Mizrahi and the prospect of the revitalization it brings to this area. I own a historic home there where I plan to live for the rest of my life. I ride my bicycle in the neighborhood every day for exercise. Like Mayor Goodman, I think this is the greatest city of them all, and the downtown area of which the Huntridge is part is the heart of this city. I definitely am in favor of the project, and I appreciate all that Mr. Mizrahi is trying to do. Thank you.
Thank you.
By the way, Ms. Mary Joy lives in the home that was Mamie Stocker's original home, with a weeping mortar, and has been a great neighbor.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Hello, Commissioners. I'm Jack Levine with 1818 Eighth Place. I write a website blog called Berry Vintage Vegas, and I've been very instrumental in pushing and promoting new people to come and live back downtown for money to be spent back downtown to help to redevelop the area. I see the project that's before you tonight as a major, major boon to the growth and the redevelopment and the regenderification of the downtown that the mayor talked so much about. It's not just about high rises, it's about historical homes and historical neighborhoods. The Huntridge neighborhood is certainly part of that, and the Huntridge Theater as an icon of that neighborhood deserves to be preserved. We came at this from a point of historic preservation. That's who the people that started the Save the Huntridge movement. We were, we started out as protesters against Mr. Mizrahi's plan to tear the building down, and eventually, the dialogue turned to, how can we educate him and teach him and get him on our side that the building can be saved? And we understand that it can't be saved as a theater. We understand that it has to be an economically viable project, which is why Building Three needs to be there. It has to have enough square footage and be able to generate enough rent, and to be able to create an atmosphere with quality tenants that will certainly help to just change the whole image of the corner of Charleston and Maryland Parkway. And anything at all right now is a huge improvement over the wasteland that it is right now, and all of my readers and myself fully support this project. Thank you.
Thank you.
While I follow, 240 North 19th Street. Commissioners, this is a beautiful project, but I also concur with the first speaker, Mr. Owen Messinger, whatever. These people cannot be trusted. They've stuck their finger in our eye on everything, from science, it doesn't matter. Time and time again, they've been before the council and before the Planning Commission, promising all kinds of stuff, only to thumb their nose at us and do whatever they damn please. They just can't be trusted. If there's some form of performance bond you could put upon these people or something. But the other thing, they says they're going to sell the thing, they can't sell it, or tear the building down because it's a destroyed thing and the state's got some thing involved with it. But still, still, we're dealing with people that can't be trusted, and that's the problem.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak for or against this item? We'll close the public hearing. We'll hear some comments from Ms. Lazovich.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. I don't know if you noticed when the, all the speakers were speaking, they actually were showing pictures of what the buildings look like today, and yes, there used to be signage on there. When SEMAs was operating out of there, there was signage painted on the buildings. It's all one color now. There is no signage, thank you. There is no signage on the sides of the buildings, especially as you drive along Maryland Parkway. And also, if you remember, the old post office used to be painted kind of a green color, and now that's an off-white color, meant to make, at least as the building sits there vacant today, it all look the same. So the signage problem has gone away from what it looked like when it was actually having businesses operate out of it. Now it's all one consistent color with no signage on it whatsoever. So he did take care of that. Thank you very much. That was the commitment that we made to the neighborhood when I represented this project for the first plan that we had, which was to run it as a concert venue, that we would take care of the signage, especially that was painted on the side of this building in front of you along Maryland Parkway, and he's done that. With respect to the people who were kind enough to come out tonight and support it, I very much appreciate that. It is difficult for people to sometimes take time out of their evenings to come down and lend their support to the project. But it's with their help that the owners have come up with a plan that they want to try to put here. It preserves the Huntridge. They've used the word an adaptive reuse, which I think is a great phrase to describe what it is, but it still preserves the Huntridge and gives the owner the ability to attempt to go out there and build a project that will actually succeed on this corner. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Commissioner?
Commissioner Quinn?
Well, I do trust you, Mrs. Lazovich, Jennifer, and I do believe this is a beautiful project for that corner. There's no need for me to go on and on and on, but I think this is proof for the entire city that when neighbors work with owners with a great representative, you can do great things. And I believe you'll stay on them to make sure their commitment is fulfilled because the Huntridge is a great corner, and if it turns out anything like these pictures, it's going to be great for the entire city, and I trust that you'll make sure that it's completed.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Truesdale?
Yeah. The neighbors are right in a lot of ways. Is it a great project? Is it better than what's there? Yes. Is it a property owner that has been disingenuous over the last seven years? Absolutely. Up until the last two years, it's probably the greatest economic boom in real estate before now we're on, where we're at today, and this project's come before us time and time again, and the property owner has done zero with, I mean, yeah, painted the old SEMAs furniture mattress for sale and off the side. And it's, if we approve this and if the council approves this, that is no guarantee the Huntridge Building will be there a year from now, or two years from now. My concern with this owner and the enforcement issues that the city has had and the compliance issues is that time and time again, we've had applications come for us, the building is set there, empty, decaying, and I'm afraid that before the first shovel goes in the ground, because financing in this market is not there, we're going to wind up with something less. So it's, mine is just a belief that the developer, not, Ms. Lazovich has always represented herself and her clients fairly here, and, but she can't force the property owner to do what's right over time. And while this is a great picture, I just have a concern that we will lose this icon or that it'll continue to deteriorate before something positive happens. And there's no guarantee around it. I just want the neighbors, the people that are saying, you know, we want to save the Huntridge, this zoning action doesn't save the Huntridge. The only thing that's going to save the Huntridge is probably a different property owner's there. And all we're doing here is, I don't think the current owner is got the commitment or the capacity to build this project. So, I mean, and that's, and I'll look at the rest of the items as they come forward, but I just don't believe, I think we're going to lose this as an icon in the community, whether we like it or not. I just believe that.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, thank you. I want to acknowledge that this site has I want to acknowledge that this site has gotta be very, very difficult to work with. Because of the historic element of the Hunt Ridge, if it were another structure, it likely could or would have been torn down, and the property would be ripe for development. And I think because of the covenants, because of the money that the state gave, I believe the State Preservation Office under the prior owner, the covenants will not allow it to be torn down, and my understanding is that the current owner at one point had offered to perhaps pay that money back in hopes of developing the property. And to the credit of Mr. Alvarez and Pam and Mary Joy and Jack and some of the other people, I think they went a long way in helping to create some sort of an adaptive reuse in the, with the goal of preserving the building. And I think that's what a lot of the, I can't, you know, I don't wanna mischaracterize what these folks believe, but it's my belief that that's their goal, is to ensure that the building itself is saved. Is it the best design in the world? I don't think so. But it's a difficult site to deal with. You've got land in the front, land in the back, an existing historic structure in the middle, and all of the setback issues and parking, et cetera. So, my thought is, it may be the best hope for the saving of the building. As a matter of full disclosure, I did meet with Ms. Lazovich. I did go down, and Eli was nice enough to show me through the building, and it is a challenge. I don't know, I really don't know what else to say about it. I had concerns about the drive-through, which I think the staff did as well, and what I want to avoid is the situation, catty corner, where we have a Burger King and the drive-through dumps right out into the parking lot. It's a public safety issue, and I think part of my job here is to ensure that kids don't get run over and that we pass things that meet certain safety standards for the public. Ms. Lazovich, I appreciate your bringing to the attention of the fact that the corner, the exits onto Maryland Parkway are blinded by the way the road curves around from the park there. In any way, we could calm traffic or alert people that there's essentially a blind alley would be helpful. To be frank, I liked the previous proposal better. I think the city went overboard in helping to ensure that the previous application, which included a tavern or something of that nature, there was hopes that it would become like a jazz club, I think. It also allowed gaming, and given its proximity to the park and the school, I think that was pretty amazing that it got passed. But there too, I think the issue was, can the building be preserved? So, I think that's probably the, at least that's my thought. How do we safely save a building that has great historic significance and some kind of an adaptive reuse? And I also appreciate, Ms. Lazovich, mentioning that Eli would be willing to, some sort of a nod to the Hunt Ridge. I don't know what the lobby would look like, but the lobby's what I remember as a kid, that and going upstairs to the little nanny room where the kids cried, and you could hide out up there and make out or whatever, but...
All right, Mr. Evans, you don't cause a ghost to rise around here tonight. We may get more than we bargained for.
Oh, I had to pay for it. I had to pay for it, trust me.
To have you bronzed in the lobby.
The, Paco, Mr. Alvarez, I believe, is the curator of the News Bureau, the Las Vegas Convention of News Bureau photo collections, if I'm not mistaken. And my thought was, and I dug this one up from Edith and Lloyd Katz, who were friends of mine, Edith is still alive. This was a picture of Mike Todd, who was married to Elizabeth Taylor, who was a producer, and this was for a premiere from around the world in 80 days, and they remodeled the Hunt Ridge for that premiere. And someone can correct me if I misspeak, but I think it was Irene Dunn and Loretta Young, who were one of the original owners, that Frank Sinatra did premieres there. It was really, the Hunt Ridge has an incredible history, and, you know, in a perfect world, it would still be some sort of a concert venue or, you know, some sort of an entertainment venue. I think the representation, what messed that up was, quite frankly, the House of Blues and probably the hard rock and all the other venues on the strip that sucked the life out of what was a very viable operation. So, whether or not it's, you know, I guess that's not something that's gonna happen. But my thought was, and perhaps, Paco, maybe you can help with this, but I would think that your collection, there's gotta be hundreds, if not, you know, there has to be hundreds of pictures, which, if you're gonna have an adaptive reuse and you're gonna have a public lobby, it would seem to me that that would be the nod to the history. It doesn't replicate the reality, but at least it's something that would give us some visual sense of place. And, you know, I don't know what's out there, but I know there's a lot, and I would hope that, you know, that that could, that could be a living memorial in this sort of an adaptive reuse. The other thing was the lighting, I appreciate that. I think it's important that the tower itself be lit, and how you would not diffuse lighting, or rather, what's the term? Someone help me out here with the, where the light spills out into the neighborhood. You don't want that.
Right.
You don't want those big Nazi spotlights that are going into those folks' homes. And I think that you've mentioned that you would be willing to put additional palm trees along Maryland Parkway and Charleston, and that would, that would go a long way to making me feel better. And in addition to that, and I don't think it would add substantially to the expense if you could uplight those trees, I think it would provide a visual enhancement. And then finally, and I'll get off my soapbox, I see where there is a condition where if approved, it would require the elimination of the existing, of an existing billboard on the site. And my colleagues may very much disagree with me, but my thought is, if there is revenue from that billboard, that revenue helps create the money for security and makes it a more viable project. I don't have a problem with the billboard. My colleagues very well may, but if there were any way that I could, you know, have a say in this, it would be that I would like to see the billboard remain if, in fact, this gets approved. But that's just my thought. So, in any event, it's not, it's not exactly what I want, but it seems like it's the most obvious way that the building itself could be saved. And then finally, and I want it on the record real clearly, the original illustrations that were sent to me, I wasn't as pleased with, the newer ones seem a lot better. The original stuff looked like a strip mall to me, and even though the pad in the front with the drive-through, which I still think is somewhat problematic, it was identified as a coffee use. My suspicion is that it more likely would become a Jack in the Box or something like that. And I hope that that center isn't populated with 99 cent stores or dollar stores or whatever they're called. And finally, if this does get approved, I want it to be known that if there are special use permits for protective uses for financial institutions specified, pawn shops, payday loans, that sort of thing, it absolutely would not see my support, and I would stand out in the audience and protest it. So, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions from the board?
Yes, I'd like equal time.
I would yield to my chairman about the timer on Madam Clerk, two minutes.
I too share the skepticism about this project coming into fruition, and it's just, it's unfortunate this particular site has had a terrible track record of trying to get successful business to operate out of the facility, some well-intended but unsuccessful ventures, acknowledging the fact that there's some strings attached to this particular parcel that are there as a result of accepting hundreds of thousands of taxpayers' dollars to refurbish the facility. I think it's, my optimism for saving the facility way overshadows my skepticism for it coming through. I think we need to give it the world's best try to make it be successful. My concerns lie in that the, we really hold everyone's feet to the fire in terms of the architectural consistency of the area, whether we call it Art Deco or...
Modern.
Modern. My French is worse than my Spanish, and that's getting pretty bad. But at any rate, I think that we need to be architecturally consistent. That's gonna be difficult when it comes time to bringing in a franchise, fast-food restaurant. The first thing they're gonna want is outside speakers and drive-throughs. That's gonna be tough, difficult to achieve. I don't think that every small neighborhood restaurant needs to have a drive-through. So, we talk about, let's not have swap meet type things and check cashing and those types of features, you might put that on the docket as to avoid also. I would suggest that the architectural consistency flow over and also apply to the signage for all three buildings, that they be consistent. I think a way to perhaps have a hammer over the head of the potential developer is that billboard. Billboards do generate quite a bit of revenue. I think that if we put a relatively short review period on the billboards, so that if any time the entire area is out of sync with the conditions, that the permission to have the billboard in place go away, and that they know going in right away that, hey, keep the signage in line, or you're gonna lose that $5,000 or $10,000 a month that billboard will bring in. You know, and if they know that going in, they will perhaps be a little more inclined to follow the rules. I think following the rules needs to be not only a city responsibility, but some of the fine people this evening that came and spoke on behalf of saving the Hunt Ridge will also remain vigilant and give the city a heads-up when something seems to be going in the wrong direction, and do it promptly rather than wait till it's gone too far. And that's what it's gonna take to get my support this evening on this project, and I see you nodding at the right times.
I do wanna make one comment.
Please do.
It's, I believe, I haven't done the research, but I believe the billboard that's located on the site has no reviews associated with it presently, that it was one of those billboards that was put there with no future reviews. I understand your point, and I suppose from the owner's standpoint, I would respectfully disagree with that request. The location of where the billboard is now, we would not have to move the billboard at all, in other words, take it down or put it back up in order to build the project that you see before you. I do understand your comments about the architectural consistency. The interesting thing is, some people may look at the Hunt Ridge and find it not that attractive. Other people may look at it and think that it's that modern look, a word that I had to practice today, so people don't think I'm mispronouncing the word "modern." But the other two buildings were designed, and unfortunately, the architects couldn't be here tonight, with a lot of research into that modern concept, which is, I don't wanna get into a discussion about how that's different from Art Deco or whatever.
I was pulling your leg.
But the nod to try to do that was to do, to copy the element of the Hunt Ridge Theater that had the taller, it's where the signage is really on the Hunt Ridge, and carry that on, thank you, onto the other retail buildings, so that, I think that that brings in the architectural consistency. With respect to the actual signage on the building, I believe they need to do a master sign plan, so that will ensure some consistency on the signage. No, they don't have to do a master sign plan.
Mr. Chairman, this billboard does have a required review. It was last reviewed in 2006.
There you go. It's a review.
And it was good for how many years?
We're checking on that right now. We're seeing if we can access that information.
Thank you. I stand corrected on that.
So, I think the reviews on the billboard should be monitored aggressively to make sure that it's in, in its entirety of the parcel is in compliance. And I don't know if the city attorney's probably cringing when I say that, but I would look at a very large definition of its being maintained and its compatibility with the neighborhood and everything else, and I'd come up a way to turn, come up with a way to turn them down and leave it up to the DA to figure out, or the city attorney to figure out a way to defend me.
Thank you. Any more comments or questions from Commissioners?
Yes.
Commissioner Steinman.
Being the short-termer up here as it relates to being a resident of the city, which I'm very proud of now, I must say that I don't know all the history here. The make-out room does intrigue me, but I did, that's not what I wanted to say. What we need to learn from this, one thing we need to learn is, let's not put cell towers on the top of historic buildings.
There's one there.
That's the most, that's the ugliest thing we could ever do, and we've done it. And I don't know whether it'll ever go away or not, but that, that is a crime. That's what it ends up being if this is gonna happen. Another thing that my observation is, and I know this won't happen, because I think I understand the economics of this property and the need for revenue to make it work, but Building B, the one in the corner, just will basically take away the beauty of this site if it's redeveloped. If this thing, the rendering that Ms. Lazovich put up was, is not gonna be seen very well from the street is one of the problems. And I know economically it has to be there, but that's sort of a crime also in this thing. The billboard, I'm usually against billboards, but I think a review period, if it's possible, is the right way to go on this. I'm not sure I understand palm trees. Why this site, I think, you know, some different trees at a lower level probably make sense for this, although one could argue with palm trees, you could at least see the building. That's the other side of it. So, I can't make that decision, but I just don't understand why this area is intriguing to having palm trees. I know they're in the center divider, right there beside it, but I'm not sure that's the right thing to do to make this look right, especially to try to hide that building that's gonna be right on the corner. I think lower trees would be a better thing to do on the corner, and if you do palms somewhere else, that's fine. But those are my comments, and, you know, I've only been here 10 years, and when I first started looking at properties, when I got on the planning commission, that place really intrigued me. That building has intrigued me from day one, driving up and down Charleston, and I don't know the history, I'm learning it now, and I know that the people will have a difficult time pulling this off today with the economic conditions the way they are and lack of funds to finance, but I hope they get it done, because this neighborhood really needs this to happen. It will help.
Mr. Chairman, just...
Hold on, Mr. Stevens. Mr. Dunham, any comments?
Other than, I was just looking at the floor plan, and I see that they have preserved the make-out room, so Steve should be happy.
Mr. Evans, we're gonna defer back, and I'm gonna limit you to about two minutes on this, because we need to move on and finish the other.
Good luck.
Well, I gotta switch over here, but...
I just wanted to respond to Commissioner Steinman. The only reason, and I'm open to anything, the only reason I think palm trees were considered was because of the safety visibility issue of traffic, because of the buildings being set back along, you know, so close to both Charleston and Maryland Parkway, I think there were issues of safety in terms of visibility, but whatever would work, you know, is fine with me. The other thing that I had mentioned to Ms. Lazovich, and it would be maybe subject to another day, is the, when the original illustrations came through, it showed lots of signage, branded signage, on each retail space, and although I suppose some of that's necessary, my thought was, the marquee of the movie theater, which I think they're preserving, I thought it could actually be enhanced, and you could have your various branded things on the marquee with chasing lights and another nod to the, to the original theater. And finally, maybe before we go, if we can, I'd like to know whether or not there may be photos that exist and whether or not some of the folks from this group can work with the applicant if this is approved for the display of historic photos.
If I can respond to the question about the trees while we're waiting for Mr. Alvarez to come up, we're providing 72 trees total. Only 11 of those are palm trees. The other, I don't know, 61, thank you, 61 trees are a combination of a bunch of different trees... that are mesquites, chetalpas. I mean, there's a bunch of different trees that are in there, and I can read the list to you, but it wasn't a center that's entirely covered in palm trees.
And I think that Commissioner Evans would be happy to see his drive-through on the corner covered by trees.
Correct. Yes.
Lowline trees. I know there's sightline issues and so on, but I think he would like to have that building pretty well protected from view.
Understood.
If it's a drive-through.
And then with respect to the comment that came up about the, there's the discussion about the billboard, and staff corrected me that there is a review on it?
There is a review. It's in, the next review will be in November of this year.
So I suppose my comment is, if this commission is serious about holding this owner's feet to the fire to make sure that certain things happen, you're actually better off deleting the condition that says we have to remove the billboard on the site plan review because it's a billboard that comes up for review every, well, in November and then thereafter for some period of time.
Now, and I would disagree with that. I would think it would be better to take it off on this particular review on the SDR rather than try to do it on a, on a regular review of that particular billboard, because it's a part of the development. They want to see it gone when the development redevelops.
No, I didn't get that impression. Well, okay. I didn't get that impression from the comments. I think the comments that I've heard have been, the billboard's not bad to stay there so long as the owner is developing the property as he's indicated he would do. That was the understanding that I got.
Right. It continues to use some of the revenues of the board to help.
That's right.
So your desire to keep the billboard there to help with the revenues of the building.
Yes.
Right. To keep the integrity of the historic theme, or not theme, but just to
The reviews.
But what's the hammer? What's the hammer on that?
Would be that when they come back for review of the billboard, that if the entire site is not conforming to all conditions, that that information be taken into consideration when the request for renewing the permission to have the
And that would have to be a condition on the actual board itself, because in order to take down a board, you have to show there's a change in condition in the area such that the billboard's no longer compatible with the area. So if you wanted to use that as a hammer, somehow you'd have to put that on the billboard itself.
And that comes back before us in November, so that's
But you don't normally put additional conditions on a review.
Okay. But the condition is that the if-approved conditions are the removal of the billboard. And my thought was, allow the billboard to stay. As long as that revenue is being generated and used for security and maintenance of the site, I'm okay with the billboard. The minute that becomes not a problem, when that billboard comes up for review, it's going to get my red button no. And I think we're all in agreement.
But again, I'm just telling you that it's more difficult to take it off at that point in time than it would be to have it removed as a condition of this being redeveloped. I'm just simply telling you that it's going to be a harder case later on than it would be now.
So your recommendation is to remove that condition?
No, to keep it on. If you want the billboard removed, the better time to remove it, the best time to remove it, would be to have it removed now on this site plan review rather than trying to remove it on a review of condition later on.
So I think Commissioner Evans, you want it to stay there?
I think so, but I'm, I think I'm more confused now than I was.
I'm simply telling you this. It would be almost impossible for you to use this as a hammer later. If you, if you want it removed, you better
I don't want, I don't want it removed.
I know, but when the commissioner was saying he'd like to use it as a hammer, I'm simply telling you, it's going to be more difficult later on to do that than it would be to do it now.
Right. Okay. So my predicament then is to remove it now and it's gone. Or to leave it there with the potential for a hammer that's going to be difficult.
Correct.
Okay. At least with the one, I've got a chance.
Right.
The other one, it's gone.
That's right.
So with that, if there's no more questions or comments, Commissioner Truesdale, then we'll entertain a motion.
Yeah, because this is an important project here. In looking at the renderings, looking at the site plan that is submitted, are you tearing down the SEMA's building and rebuilding it?
No, if
Because structurally, I mean, what you're showing is virtually a structural change that may not be possible. So I just wanted to understand that part of it.
Sure. If you can look at the exhibit, thanks. This is the previous location of SEMA's right here on the corner. And if you can imagine what it looks like now, it's only, it's not as tall as the Huntridge Theater is. So they have worked with the architects. They have done their, their research and their homework to know that, yes, they can build it up right here on this corner. That's what you're seeing. So the SEMA's portion would be given a second story, for lack of a better way to say it, right here. It would not be taller than the existing Huntridge. And then as you move down, this is where the old post office is over in that area. That doesn't have anything above it. So it's just trying to get this portion right here built up so it doesn't have that lop-off, drop-off look.
For Mr. Evans' purposes, I do have a picture when that was a bank in 1961, which is kind of interesting.
Care to donate that to the lobby?
Be glad to provide a copy of it.
Thank you.
Chairman, could I just?
If we're ready for a motion, whenever.
I want to hear Commissioner Quinn has a question.
I just have one quick question. I see the cell phone tower on this old building. Could you show me on the new renderings where it sits?
If I may, I can, I researched that there. It says Cell Yard.
Because I don't see it on this, Jennifer, but on the old one, it's on here pretty clear.
It's being retained and, right, if she can point out it. On the plans, it does say Cell Yard.
This is the actual Huntridge right here. This is where SEMA's was right here on this corner. Here's Maryland Parkway. It, there's a little area right here that says Cell Yard. It comes up from the ground, actually not the building. It comes up from the ground, right? Yeah. So it comes up from the ground. The advantage to building up like a second level above SEMA's is that becomes more, view of that cell tower becomes more obstructed because you have the portion of SEMA's that's got a lower roof line than the rest of the Huntridge built up more.
So Jennifer, you're telling me that it's not going to look like this on the new buildings?
No. Can you, could you see the cell tower at some point around the building? Like if you were standing on the south parking lot, could you see it? Yes, you're going to be able to see it. But if you were looking at it from this area, because we're building this up, I don't want to say you won't see all of it because I didn't do that research, but you're going to see far less of it than you see today because today they don't, we don't have that second story component above SEMA's.
To hide it.
To hide it, if you will, from the corner of Maryland and Charleston.
It would be my hope that it would certainly look a lot better than this.
Yes, I, mine too.
Thank you. Everybody finish with comments and questions on this item. Seagull will entertain a motion on item 29.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Evans.
Again, I wanted to thank everybody. And my motion would be for approval of Agenda Item Number 29, the variance. I think, I think good reasons have been made on the record. And I would, my motion would be for approval. Before I do that, though, Mr. Alvarez, did you say that you had pictures or that you could provide them or that the Bureau?
Commissioner Evans, we haven't found any yet. We're still researching my archives. We have 25,000 images that we have digitized of the over 3 million that we have in our collection. It's an overwhelming collection. So we're still looking. We're also tapping other archives at the State Museum, at UNLV Special Collections also. And if there's anyone in the public that has images, we would definitely like to see them.
That's a good point, you know. People do watch this, so.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 29. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. Item 30?
Item 30, again, my motion would be for approval. But one quick question. Some of the things that were mentioned on the record, the caution around the corner sign, does that all go on the site development review?
Yes.
Okay. Motion would be for approval on the variance, Agenda Item Number 30.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 30. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed. Item 31?
And item 31, the site development review, I too would recommend approval. My motion would be for approval. And if someone can assist me in the revision of some of the conditions with regard to the, I believe, the lighting, the landscaping and the signage, that would be helpful. And the deletion of condition number two.
If I may, so the motion would be to delete condition number two. On the landscaping, I have an addition to condition number nine, which would indicate, I believe, that you want the perimeter trees to be uplifted. And my question is, is that only the palm trees or is that all the trees?
Well, my thought was that, you know, if there's a landscape architect and someone with our city, that that can be determined. I think the most appropriate thing would be any tree with substantial height would be uplift. It creates a dramatic effect and I think it would enhance the entire site.
And you want this on Charleston and Maryland because then on the south edge is the neighbor's backyard? So do you want, you're talking on Maryland and Charleston, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
That's the motion on item 31. Please cast your votes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Truesdale.
Before we vote, I'd like to find a way to support this, but if we're going to delete, the billboard issue, I won't be supporting this. If, and this might surprise some of you here, but this is one site that the drive-through is really not needed or warranted. And if we want the Huntridge, this project to work, the drive-through should go away. Part of the elevations that were submitted show a slimline monopole cell tower, which I think is more in keeping with the modern architecture rather than the birdcage that's there currently. And those are the only concerns I had, if maker of the motion wanted to consider those.
There's a motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote.
Are you asking to revise the, I'd like to, I'd like to keep the billboard in there. The cell tower, are you asking that I require that it be a monopole or a stealth design?
It should be if we're talking about the site development plan and the aesthetics here. One other condition that should be added to this is the applicant during this two-year, all these have a two-year timeframe, is the applicant should fence and secure the site. Because I guarantee you, I think this is headed to a disaster and we need to do what we can. If everybody out here wants to save the Huntridge and the aesthetics of this thing, we need to make this site safe because it's, something's going to happen.
I just need to respond. My only, my only comment about the, turning the cell tower into a stealth tower is that we don't actually own that particular cell tower. I under, I respect the fact that this commission feels it necessary to put that as a condition, but I can't necessarily agree to that right now. If I, I don't know if I can fulfill that condition. So
Who was it?
18.
No, 18. It's whoever the
Carrier is.
Right. They're the less E, but it's there. I can't go take it down and put up a stealth. They would have to do it.
Last month.
I'm just, I'm just suggesting right now, I, I don't, I don't, I won't want to sit here, and I know Mr. Scott would say, Ms. Lazovich, do you agree with all the revised conditions? And that's just one of them. As I stand before you tonight, I don't know that I can comply with. That's my only comment. And so I just want to make sure I'm honest with this commission at all times.
So, Mr. Scott?
You can hold the site plan until such time as they can talk to AT&amp;T to determine if they're amenable to doing a stealth pole.
Okay. Those, that's what, that's one op, is that the only option?
That's the only option I can think of right now. I mean, I don't, like I said, they don't physically own the pole. They do own the land that the pole sits on. They have a contractual relationship with AT&amp;T, I'm assuming. So they'd need to speak with AT&amp;T to determine if they're amenable to that. If they're not, then there's no sense in trying to make them do it. So, or, or just, you know, make the nice site plan.
Commissioner Evans, you're the maker of the motion. There were a couple of suggestions proffered up by Commissioner Truesdale. I don't know at this time if you have a taste to amend your motion.
I agree with Commissioner Truesdale with the, the cell tower thing. It's ugly. But if this is a deal breaker, you know, I don't want to have to have all these people come back out to hold all of these items again. Let me see what Ms. Lazovich has to say about um
So is your concern, you're going to get some clarification on the cell tower? Are you going to entertain Commissioner Truesdale's request to add putting a fence around the property to preserve it from any potential damage?
Well, I think everybody's in agreement that security is an issue there. One thing that would go a long way, maybe not so much offense in my mind, although perhaps that would be, some temporary fencing would be appropriate if, in fact, it goes through a construction phase, but to light the property. You know, if it's pitch dark, it's an opportunity for vandalism and mischief. So that would be my first consideration is that you light the property. The fencing, you know, I, is it a several-year process in the build-out? I don't know. Commissioner Truesdale, you, you know more about these things than I do. What do you think? I mean, I don't want to see a bunch of chain-linked fencing and debris in the fence. And yet, if there were a way that the property could be lit during the construction phases, maybe it wouldn't be such an issue.
Well, I mean, Commissioner, let's, it's not being maintained well. You can see this. There's no landscaping. If you want to make it safe, treat it as a construction site, treat it as a development site, and have it safed and fenced, I think that protects the neighbors. So things aren't happening behind the building of a nature and character because closed buildings and abandoned buildings tend to have things happen to them. And I do appreciate the neighbors coming out here, but to rush through an approval on this, I mean, one of the people's indicated, I mean, it's like bailing out Wall Street. How, fast is better or, or better is better?
Ms. Lazovich.
As a planning commissioner, I want to make better is better here.
Mr. Evans?
Ms. Lazovich, what is your, do you have any thought any one way or the other?
I'm not in a position to agree to either of the conditions that were offered about the cell tower or the chain link fence.
Okay. So, Mr. Evans, you originally had a motion on the floor for approval. There were a couple of suggestions offered up. The attorney for the applicant has asked the applicant who has refused to comply with those. So I guess we're back at your original motion and
The original motion is with the deletion of condition two, which would remove the condition requiring the removal of the billboard. And the other condition that was in the original motion was to uplight the trees of substantial height on the north and west perimeter.
Thank you.
And the request has been made for
There was three other things. One was the elimination of the drive-through. The second was that the existing cell tower shall be replaced with a stealth tower. And the third would be that the site shall be fenced and lighted and lit and maintained in such fashion until construction commences.
Thank you. Ms. Lazovich?
I, no, nothing further.
See the output?
If, if I may.
Did you want to speak?
If I may.
Name and address on the record.
My name is Eli Mizrahi. I'm the actual applicant. I am a managing member of ECT Holdings. First of all, I was sitting back there and I was hearing everybody say, say bad things about me and my family. I never, I've been before this commission one time, and that was because we asked to do the Huntridge as a tavern with, with jazz supper, the whole nine yards. And I was, I was this close to doing it before the whole construction boom happened. That, Mr. Truesdale, that was not my fault. I had every intention of going through with that. But when you get a $1.7 million contract and then two years later, you get a $4.8 million contract, it's quite difficult to do and sustain. Secondly, for you guys to sit up here and be skeptical of this product, of this project is 100% correct. I'm skeptical of it. It's up for lease right now, the way it is, as shown. I've worked with everybody I've worked with everybody in the neighborhood to get places in there. Can I say 100% that once you guys approve this, that we're going to have the most gorgeous center in the world? No. And I've, and I've been upfront with everybody. I've been upfront with everybody. We, we can, but I can't do anything without approvals here. So we can, I could put it up for lease, and I could get nobody, I can, and then what do we do? Do I go through with construction? Do I pay $6 million out of my own pocket because the state isn't helping me? The city isn't helping me? The county isn't helping me? It's my money. I'm putting it up. So do I go through and spend $6 million in hopes of somebody coming then? I mean, that's just not the way things work. And I don't have the $6 million to put into this place. The way it happens, you get leases, you get construction financing according to the leases. Right now, I have two leases that are in LOI phase. And I've been marketing this thing diligently for a month. I've been very upfront with everybody that I've dealt with. Well, this, everybody says, well, you didn't do it the first time. Well, there's a very big reason why I didn't do it the first time. There's a very big reason why I didn't do it the first time. And this time, there could be a reason why I don't do it this time. If, and if we come up in two years and I come up to you and say, hey, you know, I don't have a lease. This economy is crap right now. Nobody is, is doing anything. So is that a possibility? Yes. Will I try my damnedest? Yes. But that's all I can do. I mean, that's all I can do is try to make this place, try to preserve this place. I've been through the gamut of not tearing this down. I've been through the gamut of tearing this down. I'm doing what I think is best for the community to try to keep this 100% intact. 100% intact. I'm not, I'm, I can't, I'm sorry, but I can't sit there and say that you guys, let you guys say that we were doing the wrong things. I tried to do everything in my power with this place. I've constantly tried to paint this place after graffiti's littered it day in and day out. Weekly, I am out there painting this place with no help from the city. I have no idea where, where, Mr. Truesdale, I'm sorry, I apologize. And with all due respect, I would love to talk to you in private, but I do business the correct way. I've never wavered in anything that I've done. There's reasons behind everything that's done. I was this close for it to become a supper club. This close. And honestly, we can blame Endo for that, and I can explain everything to you before. But I'm, I've never lied to anybody, and I've never given false hope to anybody. I've tried to lease it as a venue. Nobody stepped up to the plate. I've had my phone number up there for over a year trying to get anybody in, and anybody, the city, the county, the state, anybody to come in there, nobody has. I mean, I'm trying to do my best here. You know, I.
Thank you for those comments, very, very passionate. Okay? Any more questions or comments from the board? If not, we'll entertain a motion on item. Well, there's an item on mo, there's an item or a motion offered for approval on item thirty-one. Mr. Evans, would that motion be as you offered it up the first time with no amendments?
Well, Ms. Wheeler, you talked about the deletion of condition number two and all the other specifics. I think Commissioner Truesdale was asking about fencing, I think lighting and the drive-through.
Yes.
I'm not sure I disagree with him. But I don't want to see this building be destroyed. And yet, I don't think it's on my way or the highway thing. So as much as I don't want to hold this, is there any thought that there would be some? I mean, obviously, if they can get a stealth cell tower rather than that thingamajig they got up there now, that would be, that would probably go a long way into getting some votes. The drive-through, I, you know, I don't know. I mean, it's, it's part of the application, and as much as I'm not convinced it's necessary, that would be not something that I would be overly concerned about. The lighting, I think, is just a given. The fencing, I'd like to know what it would look like. So do you want to hold the?
May I ask a question? Maybe we could just resolve this.
Oh, please.
Am I loaded? Okay.
Yes.
Is this fencing and lighting post or pre-construction? I mean, are we talking about afterwards? Because I went to the neighbors, one being here, and we offered to, well, we actually went and paid to start a block wall in the back and around the property. And he actually came out and stopped us because he didn't want to, for us to impede his in and out of his backyard. And then that would, we actually started construction on this fence, and he told us not to.
I think, and Commissioner Truesdale has to speak for himself, but I think he was saying, put something around there now at the state that it's sitting because right now it has a, because it's a historic building, the.
If you put temporary construction fencing around there, I think your graffiti would drop down. I think, and there's always a potential that the windy day, there'll be some bags against the fence or something. But I, I think you'd make the building safer for yourself and the neighbors. And, and I don't think it would impede your leasing program because once you start construction, you're going to have to put the temporary fencing anyway.
Right, except for the fact that it would, it would impede any sort of, any sort of police policing of the property. A police officer could not go in there and out of there. As we know, I mean, whoever wants to get in there is going to be able to get in there, regardless if we have an eight-foot fence or not. What I'm more worried about is the police traffic that we have back there, which is immense. And you'll at all times see a police car behind the hunt ridge. So, I mean, I would, I would like for that not to happen. But, I mean, not to mention, fence around that property would look hideous for the next X amount of months.
I think, if I can speak, the concern.
Just one more thing, we have no power. So, I mean, I can't do any lighting there. And that's unfortunate, but that's, you know.
I think they mean lighting when it's developed, correct?
No, we're talking pre.
Well, I was talking, the, the condition was to light the building when it's developed.
Right.
The concern now is that I can drive through that parking lot in the day or the night, and I can find a vagrant back there. That's a fire waiting to happen. That's what I think I'm concerned about. That's what I think this commission.
And it's getting ready to get cold with the weather, too, may throw that in.
Why don't we, maybe there's some way we can resolve the cell tower thing with a stealth design, look at construction fencing and the other aspects, and we can come back and, you know, I mean, I think everybody knows what this commission's wishes are. And we can take a vote on the, I guess, the, we can redo it. We'll do a redo. Want to hold it for 30 days?
It's your, it's your call, Commissioner. You have a motion on the floor for, for approval or you could.
Commissioner Truesdale makes some valid concerns. I don't know what the vote's going to be like. My issue is I want to make sure the building is preserved. And I think we're all on the same page there. But the devil is in the details. So my motion would be, without the absence of any agreement tonight on the specifics, my motion, we'd hold it for 30 days.
My only comment to that, I understand there's a motion on the floor, is that I just don't want to mislead the commission about the drive-through portion. It is a portion of this application that I don't believe in 30 days we would come back to you and say that we could remove. And I understand we need to do some research on the cell tower, and then an internal discussion on the fencing, and then talk to you.
Okay, but you got an approval on, we're going to have to rescind the votes. You had two variances. I think it was a leap of faith. You got those approved. We're all the way down to the site development review. It's down to the cell tower, the fencing, the lighting, and perhaps the drive-through. And the drive-through, as much as I don't like it, wasn't a hill for me to die for. But I guess we'll have this again another day, and wouldn't we need to rescind the other two?
So, yeah, I was going to ask the city attorney on items twenty-nine and thirty, we're going to have to rescind our vote.
Correct, Mr. Chairman.
Right. I'll go ahead at this time to entertain a motion on item twenty-nine to rescind.
Motion to rescind approval from item twenty-nine.
Motion on the floor, please cast your vote for the rescind. And that has been approved. Item thirty.
Motion to rescind the approval on the vote on item number thirty.
Motion to rescind, cast your vote.
Commissioners Clinton and Truesdale, your votes stand register. Thank you.
But that motion has been approved.
And on all three items, twenty-nine, thirty, and thirty-one, my motion would be to obey them for 30 days.
October 23rd.
To October.
October 23rd.
And I would ask that the record that has been made here this evening be carried forward to the next meeting in hopes that everybody doesn't have to come out and spend their evening with us again.
Well, Commissioner Evans, I was going to invite people, I was going to make a, an announcement that if you do have any photos from the hunt ridge back in the early days, out there in the listening public, we would appreciate it if you could bring those to the 10-23 meeting. And we'll accompany it with the application. So that's all we have. We'll take about a 10-minute break here. Oh, please cast your vote on the hold for 30 days. And that motion has passed.
Thank you.
And we'll take about a 10-minute break here. Thank you. We're going to begin the meeting in about two minutes. We're going to call the meeting back to order. Items thirty-two through thirty-four. Item thirty-two variance, 29446, applicant owner Clark County Legal Services Program, Inc. to allow an 84 parking spaces where 130 are required at the northwest corner of Charleston Boulevard and Eighth Street. Item thirty-three, VAR 29447, to allow a 10-foot front yard setback where 20 feet is required, a five-foot side yard setback where 10 feet is required, a zero-foot corner side setback where 15 feet is required, a zero-foot rear yard setback where 20 feet is required, and to allow approximately 83% lot coverage where 50% is the maximum allowed. Item thirty-four, SDR 29445, for a proposed four-story, 39,000-square-foot office building with waivers of perimeter landscape buffer requirements to allow a zero-foot buffer along the north property line where eight feet is required, to allow a five-foot buffer along the west property line where eight feet is required, and to allow a 10-foot buffer along the south and east property lines where 15 feet is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed variances would constitute a 36% reduction in required parking as well as a 33% increase in lot coverage on the subject's site. This coupled with the additional variance request from setbacks and the requested landscape buffer waivers as part of the associated site development plan review illustrate that the subject's site is being overbuilt. As such, proposed development is incompatible with the adjacent development in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending denial of the proposed site development plan review. Staff is also recommending denial of the proposed variances as they have been deemed self-imposed hardships. Please note, additional letters of protest and support have been received. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Chairman, excuse me, I will be abstaining from this. I'm a court-appointed advocate for disabled children out of this office.
Thank you. Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Commissioners Russell Rowe, 3800 Howard Hughes Park. We're here on behalf of the applicant, Clark County Legal Services. They just recently changed their name, in fact, to Legal Aid Center of Southern Nevada. What I have before you on the overhead is the Charleston elevation of the site along with a small map indicating where the property is highlighted in yellow. If you can see that. There we go. Just to give you a little background on Clark County Legal Services, if you're not familiar with it, they're a private nonprofit agency that's been around our community since 1958. They provide free legal services to those who cannot afford them or those folks who cannot defend themselves. They have programs such as the Children's Attorneys Project, Domestic Violence Project, Pro Bono Project, and others that serve women, children, the elderly, and many others in our community who can't afford legal services. I'm telling you this because it is relevant to the application and relevant to the variances. They served over 11,000 individuals, residents of Clark County, last year. But that's just a 3%, that's only 3% of the total eligible population in Clark County. Their, their guidelines for services are income-based. And they expect with the growth of Clark County over the next 20 years for their, the need for their services to more than triple or quadruple. So there's a very dire need for expanding their services. And this project is the center point for how they're going to address the need over the next 20 years in this community. The project itself is a 39,000-square-foot office building on property at the northwest corner of Charleston and Eighth Street. Its master plan, general commercial in Zone C1, is in the downtown redevelopment plan. It's four stories in height, or, excuse me, four stories and 65 feet in height. Now, the top two levels, third and fourth levels, have a built-in, or, excuse me, are offices. The second level is a built-in parking garage, and the first level is a parking garage with a small exception of an area. I could show you on the plan, floor plan, if you want to see it, where the receptionist and intake rooms are for, for the clients that come to the facility. Let me show you the site plan. As I mentioned, the, the structure will have a parking garage built within it. Access to that parking garage will be off of Eighth Street and off of the alleyway on the west side of the property. This would be the public parking area within the parking structure. There'd also be access to the south along the alleyway into the parking structure. And this would be the access for employees. All of these accesses would be gated. Obviously, for the public parking areas, the gates would remain open during business hours. However, the entrance for the employees would be gated at all times, and employees would operate the gate remotely for security reasons. The, the structure, as well as they're attempting to obtain LEED Gold certification for this project, which again will be relevant to the variances that I'm going to talk about. The first of which is for the setbacks. We do have a few setback variances on, on the site. The first being along the front, we have a 10-foot setback on Charleston where 20 feet is required. But adjacent to our property to the west, the existing building already has a 10-foot setback. And as you move further along Charleston to the west, just a block and a half away is the downtown centennial plan, which as you know allows a zero-foot, zero lot line setback if approved per the plan. So this would provide smooth transition from the west along Charleston, where there are existing zero lot lines, to the 10-foot setback that we have adjacent to us. And we'd be conforming to what is already adjacent to our property to the west. On the, along Eighth Street, we have a 10-foot setback. The application calls out a zero lot line on the east property line on Eighth Street. But that is only for a small portion right here where the stairwell is for the parking structure. That would be a zero lot line and it matches the existing structure adjacent to us, which happens to be the existing Clark County Legal Services building, which already has a zero lot line. The remainder of the setback along Eighth Street would be a 10-foot setback. As I can see, as you can see, we would have a sidewalk that's well over 20 feet in depth. We'd also have a sidewalk that's 15 feet in depth along Charleston. The setback for the rear part of the site on the north end of the property would match the existing zero lot line for the building adjacent to us. Obviously, we would not want to create a canyon-like alley effect and have open, empty space that would be both useless. that would be both useless and unsafe. So in designing the project, we thought it'd be best to match the 0-lot line along the north end. On the west end, we have a 5-foot setback where I believe 10, if I'm not mistaken, is required along the alley. Our neighbors on the west side of the alley have a 0-lot line from most of the alley. And if you look in this area, throughout alleys as you go north into the downtown portion, most of the setbacks along these alleys in this area are about our 5 feet. So we believe we conform, and in some cases exceed, the setbacks that are existing adjacent to us and in the area. So in those aspects, although we don't conform to the code, we do conform to the existing development around us. The other variance I'd like to address tonight is the parking variance. As I mentioned, it's a 39,000-square-foot structure that would require 130 parking spaces as required under the code standards. That would leave us with 84 parking spaces, which is a 35.3% reduction. As provided on the plan, we actually have 89 parking spaces. We've requested 84 in the variance to provide some flexibility in case we do need to lose a few parking spaces as we move through the construction phase of this project, which would leave us, if we kept all 89, would be a 31% reduction. We think this is justified in this particular situation, Commissioners, because of the type of clientele and the mission that Clark County Legal Services provides in this community. As I mentioned, to be eligible for services for Clark County Legal Services, you have to comply with income guidelines. And stated frankly, Commissioners, many of the clients cannot afford a car or do not have a car or cannot drive. There are their children or their elderly who don't drive anymore. Approximately 50% of the clientele that does come to the center come by means other than a car. They either use mass transit, or they ride a bike if they can, or they walk, or in many cases, they have relatives or friends drop them off, which is a key aspect to this application. Moreover, the programs that they provide, such as the Children's Attorneys Project, do not require their clients to come to the facility. The children that they serve, the attorneys often go to them, whether it's at their home or the foster care facility, or to the schools where they get to observe the children in their environments, which is a very key aspect to the care they're providing and the protection they're providing to the children. So for these reasons, we believe that the parking variance would be justified. Moreover, mass transit is a very key element of this application, and the location of this project at Charleston and 8th Street is not by coincidence. Charleston, and as Commissioner Goins knows, Route 206 is the third busiest route in the cat bus system. It runs the length of the community, going from west to east. A large portion of the population that uses the services at Clark County Legal Services either comes from the downtown area, which is approximately 45%, or the remainder comes mostly from east and northeast Las Vegas. Route 206 on Charleston runs directly into this area, provides direct access to Clark County Legal Services. There are two bus stops, both next door to this facility and across the street. Route 206 intersects with Maryland Parkway, which is the second busiest route, non-tourist route I should say, and it intersects with Las Vegas Boulevard, which is the busiest route in the valley, as you know. So that provides access for these clients, both from where they live and wherefrom they work. Again, a key aspect to this application and to where this facility is located. In addition, Route 206, and I know I don't want to bore you guys with this stuff, but it is very important to the application. Route 206 is expected to connect with the new terminal that's replaced in the Regional Transportation Center, which will provide greater access and transfer for clients coming here. And most of the referrals, or many of the referrals they get, are from the Regional Justice Center, which as you know is in the downtown area, and those folks often walk or take the bus over. So the point being, a large percentage of the clientele at this facility do not come by vehicle and do not need a parking space. One of the other aspects, let me show you this small exhibit we prepared, is the off-site parking in the area. We went out and measured the distance on the public parking that's available on street parking, both on Gas and on 8th, between Charleston and Gas, and on Gas between 7th and 9th. And in total, that adds an additional 59 available spaces. And it's relevant because if you drive this area, you'll see that there is plenty of parking in and around the existing Clark County Legal Services Building. The existing building is an 11,000-square-foot building. They have 21 parking spaces on their current property. That's this one right here. Under the current code requirements, they need 37 parking spaces, and they only have 21. It's a 43% reduction. They have no parking issues because they don't need that much parking. One, because of their clientele; two, because of the mass transit; three, because you've got ample parking on the street, which is never filled up.
Mr. Rowe, if I can interrupt you for a moment. Our backup says that 48% of your clients do not use a vehicle, a car, as a means of primary transport. I'm assuming that you got that data from surveying your clients?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. And on that basis, you think there's a parking justification for the reduction in the parking?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to end right there, actually, Commissioners, so thank you for the question.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against us? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Commissions or questions? Commissioner Evans?
I would just concur with Mr. Rowe's presentation. We're not supposed to look at the merits of a project when we're making zoning decisions, and I'd like to think that I'm not. I think they have made a good analysis. If I'm not mistaken, a block away, the standards for setbacks and parking would be different because of the Centennial Plan. And I absolutely agree with the analysis of the parking. I don't think it would be parking deficient. But I would be remiss, and I think everybody here would agree, what a good project this is, and all the attorneys and the staff who provide pro bono work for the legal services. I take my hat off to all the lawyers who give up their time. I really don't think it's a matter of charity. I think it's a matter of justice. And I take my hat off to all of you.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments by the board? Mr. Steinman?
I just want Mr. Rowe to explain to you a couple of factors related in this being potentially a LEED Gold Building, because there's a couple of interesting facts there, especially the bicycle issue that you need to say.
I was trying to keep it short, Commissioners. I'm always accused of speaking way too much.
I'm sorry. But I will address that. This is really interesting, I thought.
Commissioner Steinman's right, LEED Gold Certification. One of the requirements, as you guys probably know, is getting alternative transportation credits. One of the ways to do that is to encourage employees to come to work by means other than a car. Mass transit is a big part of that, obviously. Another way is by bicycle. You can obtain credits under the LEED system if you build into your project bicycle storage and changing in shower rooms. So what we have on the second level here, this is the second level of the parking garage, is our bicycle storage facility located here. And then, just as you come inside the structure, the interior of the structure, you have a men's and women's restroom along with showers for each. And that will be very important in encouraging folks to ride their bike. And that's important, not only for employees that live close by and are within bicycle range, but as you know, all of the cat buses have bike racks on them, so you can really use bicycle transportation in any area of the city and get to their office.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments?
I'm prepared to make a motion if there's no more discussion. My motion would be for approval of Agenda Item Number 32. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Yes. Agenda Item Number 32, the variance for the parking for the reasons stated on the record. Motion for approval.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 32. Please cast your votes. That motion has passed with Commissioner Quinn abstaining. Item 33?
Item 33, the variance. Once again, I think they've made a good analysis, and I agree with it. My motion would be for approval.
Motion for approval of Item 33. Please cast your votes.
May I make one comment before 34?
You want to show that was approved with Commissioner Quinn abstaining?
I just want Bart Anderson to take note that when a person's driving westbound on Charleston and tries to turn into the alley where this corner will be, almost an impossibility, you have to go over into the property that's next door. So somebody needs to make sure there's proper turn in there, proper curving. It is very, very tight, and you can't really do it without going into the other property. So that's my comment.
Thank you, so noted.
Were you in the Lincoln that day or the SUV? Okay, thank you. It's got long cars.
On the site development review, I'd like to make a motion for approval, but as a matter of disclosure, I did discuss this with Mr. Rowe, and I think you were going to look at the possibility of some additional trees, hopefully along Charleston. I think the site plan for, if approved, calls for eight trees along Charleston. Were you able to get additional trees in there?
You know, we were looking at that, and Commissioner Evans, we're happy to put in as many trees as you want us to. But I looked at that today, because I remember you asked me about that, and we have trees 30 feet on center, and I believe that's code. And I measured out the distance and think, well, maybe we don't have enough. And at least based on the scale of this site plan, based on the measurements, we'd be required to have five trees and four on 8th Street. So I don't quite understand where we're not meeting at least our tree requirement. That said, Commissioner, we do have the architects looking at that, and we're going to see.
If you could work on it between now and the city council.
Absolutely.
Because it's not that it's not meeting code, it's that I'm trying to make sure that at some point we have a treescape, a streetscape along Charleston, and the pie-shaped nature of your lot, I think it would go a long way.
Absolutely. And we'd be happy to run by any modifications to see you can see that before the city council hearing.
Yes, I'd appreciate that.
And if you have suggestions on types of trees as well, we're happy to hear it.
Well, I do, but there are many others who are almost as smart as I am, so. Agenda Item Number 34 on the site development, my motion would be for approval.
Move for approval of Item 34. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed with Commissioner Quinn abstaining.
And all matters go forward to City Council on November 5th.
Items 35 through 37. Item 35, variance 29730, applicant Tower Realty and Development, LLC, owner Clark County Credit Union, to allow 0-foot setbacks where 20-foot front yard, a 10-foot side yard, a 15-foot corner side yard, and a 20-foot rear yard setback are required, and to allow a 100% lot coverage where a maximum of 50% is permitted at the southwest corner of Chef Andre Rocha Place in 7th Street. Item 36, SUP 29306, for a proposed 52,498-square-foot mixed-use project. Number 37, SDR 29015, for a 52,498-square-foot five-story mixed-use project with waivers of the perimeter landscape requirements to allow a 0-foot wide landscape buffer along the north and west property lines where 15 feet is required, and a 0-foot wide landscape buffer along the south and west property lines where 8 feet is required. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the variances and related waivers indicate that this site is being overbuilt, and staff recommends denial of both variances and the site plan review.
Mr. Chairman?
Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
I'm going to need to abstain on this particular item. While it's a volunteer position, I do serve on the Board of Directors for the Clark County Credit Union, and therefore, I guess, have a vested interest in the projects.
Thank you very much. So noted. Applicant, sorry.
Good evening, Mr. Goins. Commissioners, good to see you. Mr. Scott, Council ladies, and Ms. Wheeler. And anyway, my name's Jeff Albrecht, 40 South 4th Street, third floor now. With me tonight are the two design professionals, Mr. Calvin Haywood and Mr. Dick Kohler, as well as the managing member of the owner, or one of the managing members, Louis Carnesal. And Mr. Haywood's going to handle much of tonight's presentation, and for which I'm sure he will be grateful. But what I'd like to point out is a couple of things very briefly. I'd ask you to look at this project on a case-by-case basis. At first blush, it would seem that staff is making the right recommendation, and we, of course, respectfully, and I mean very respectfully, disagree with staff's recommendation. But this is a neighborhood with which I think everyone here, including the four folks up in front of you now, are very familiar. I practiced law for about, I think, five years out of 701 Bridger Avenue, which was in fact a project that was brought to you by this applicant, redeveloped a few years ago, and I believe done according to exactly how you wanted it done. I think Mr. Haywood and Mr. Kohler also worked out of 701 Bridger Avenue for a while, so I'm intimately familiar with the area. My office now is close to it, and of course, this is close to all the downtown courthouses. My youngest daughter, Colleen, now attends school at the academy, so I drop her off every day. I guess by way of digression or background, I did mention to her, like most paranoid fathers, that those houses over there on those lots are attractive nuisances, and you stay away from that side of the street. But the four things I'd like to point out to you with respect to the development of this site and to keep in mind, that's somewhat counterintuitive, and I don't think you're addressing the merits, as Mr. Evans has rightfully expressed concern, as much as the justifications, if you will, the workability of doing these projects, of redeveloping our downtown in the areas that are precious to us, like the Hundreds Theater, and as well as adhering to the standards we set long ago for the community. So on that note, the first thing I'd like you to note is that the lot size is 200 feet by 140 feet, which gives us, if the arithmetic given to me by my design professionals is correct, I should have checked it, about 28,000 square feet. If you were to go with the setbacks that exist now for this, it would reduce this property by one-third, 10 and 1/2 thousand square feet, leaving about 17 and 1/2 thousand square feet to develop. Now, the reason that's important is when you look at the design plans developed by the two gentlemen on my left, Mr. Kohler and Mr. Haywood, they have 190 parking spaces provided here where 168 are required. And I think that's important because that means there won't be any parking on the streets surrounding the area. Testament to that, we don't have any opposition or protests, as you know. Andre doesn't protest it. He's not concerned about his parking outside his building. There won't be any parking on 7th Street, which I think's important. If you've observed the area, the school buses for the academy come up and load and drop off on 7th Street, so you won't have anything to worry about parking there and U-turns and all of those things that occur with children in the neighborhood, the safety concerns. But also aesthetically and neighborhood, design-wise, if you will, this parking garage will not be seen from the streets. It will not be accessible by the streets with the current design. We have that current design up there right now. As you can see, it will be behind the residential and retail area there, which means you won't see it like you do currently with 701 Bridger Avenue building. I don't think it's unseemly, but I think it's more attractive not to have parking there. And certainly, the safety issues are easier to control. If you look at the surrounding area, you'll find, and this isn't in as much justification as to point out that this area is in a transition and needs to be looked at on a case-by-case basis, somewhat counterintuitively, but you have Andre's place coming out to the sidewalk. Mr. Haywood will go into that in a moment, and a number of other places that don't have any of the setback requirements present. This property is also one block from the borderline where the 0 setbacks would be allowed. And of course, we have to draw a line somewhere, and probably the most logical line seemed to be the Strip or 5th Street at that point in time. And what Mr. Haywood and Mr. Kohler have carefully done, and I'll pass the floor to Mr. Haywood here in a moment. have carefully done, and I'll pass the floor to Mr. Haywood here in a moment, is they have specifically looked at and addressed, and are going to pass out to you in a moment, a brief, a few pages that explain, as well as more importantly, provide photographs to you as to why the design is the way it is, why that criteria was considered, and why we feel it's a very compatible use with all of the standards that apply here, zoning and whatnot, as well as other precedents that apply to the neighborhood. And with that, I'll pass the floor to Mr. Haywood. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelvin Haywood, 231 West Charleston, the architects for our owner. Good evening, Commissioners, and glad to be back before you once again. And you already had the handouts. I handed those out because I've been told a number of times that attorneys are much more eloquent than architects. So I wrote out what I would actually be talking about.
That picture is worth a thousand words. Appreciate it.
At least, exactly. One of the points that I want to talk about, and it actually goes right into the Centeno Plan, the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan. I talk about that a lot because we try to, in our design and in location, to stay within that because it touches on so many great points. And one of the first ones is Goal 1 and the objective 1.2, where it states that the goal is to improve the livability of the downtown through the creation of a series of safe, attractive, and interesting buildings, and non-vehicle routes to connect these open spaces to and other major downtown activities. Well, certainly, we, I believe we do that. We talked about before, the two buildings are, the two houses that the site would actually be sitting on. They are vacant right now. There's a lot that's right next to it. There's glass on the lot. Again, these buildings sit across the street from the high school. Certainly, they've been empty for at least a year. So they create an unattractive and an unsafe environment. Secondly, you know, we talk about, you know, that this, well, I mentioned, if you read in the first statement, that this site, this area is, and I believe, we believe it's in a transitional state. And if you stand, if, I'll slide this over. Right on the corner of 7th and Andre, let's say if you're looking to the west, towards the Strip, what you see basically is that the federal building. You see, you know, the vacant houses, you see empty, you know, empty lots, alley, and then you see, you know, 20-story.
10.
10-story building there. And then, again, if you turn to your right, you see the building right across the street, which is a, okay, there's a good picture, the federal building right there. Again, if you turn to your right, you'll see the apartment building across the street, and there's certainly in that area some very, very interesting architecture in there. In addition, the building, our project, the footprint is laid out in such a way that 90% is covered parking. Earlier, you talked about lead. Certainly, that is one of the lead items where we could gain points and try and actually to go for lead certification in this building. Because in reducing the heat island effect, you know, that's actually one of the lead credits. In addition to that, 100% of the parking will be off the street. Again, we previously mentioned that. Also, in the Las Vegas 2020 Master Plan, Goal 2, it states that mature neighborhoods will be sustained and improved through appropriate and selective high-quality redevelopment. I think we focused on that because this particular building is threefold. We have a residential, retail, and commercial. So we actually try and stay in that. We want to help in that area develop, so, and to bring a mixed-use redevelopment in that area. There are a few other policies. I don't want to belabor it. Again, it's before you. But, you know, again, it, being a vacant land, we want to do something that's responsive in that area. And I think the last thing I'll mention is that, I'm going to slide this over as well. If you look at that map, if you zoom in a little bit closer, that map actually shows the Las Vegas Historic District. And the little dots actually show a route when you walk through there. And that route actually goes in front of where the property is. So if someone did take a walk through, they want to see the historic area, it actually starts to the south of where the proposed project is located. So you would technically miss that. Again, if you see, we're one block inside that. If we were one block outside of that, I think a lot of the staff's recommendations would be avoided. So with that, Mr. Kohler, if you want to.
No.
Okay. With that, we thank you, and certainly we request that you approve this project.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against this project? Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Is there anything set on this property now? Are there some buildings there?
There's two houses that are.
There's two? Are they historic houses? They've been there? Then no way are they going to tear that.
Would anybody else like to comment? We'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board?
I've got several. Please.
Mr. Evans?
Yes, thank you. First, let me say, I understand it's difficult working in this area, but I really take exception to many of the statements that were made. It's not a blighted area. It does have challenges. But I'm always disappointed that in the historic part of our town, and this is the historic part, we don't look at economic ways of adaptive uses, building on to our historic buildings to make them economically viable. Every other great city does that. This is the only area, really, in Las Vegas that has history. And just to reorient everybody, a year and a half ago, or whatever, we were here. We spent a ton of time trying to make something work. It was a cockamamie idea, but it eventually saw approval. It was propping up this house on the third floor. I knew it wasn't a viable thing to do. The applicant stood before us and insisted that it was, that it would happen, and, you know, it's neither here nor there, but we assessed their credibility, and they've been indicted for major mortgage fraud. This project, and Mr. Farlow, to answer your question, this is the original Pop Squires home. This is one of the most historic homes in all of Las Vegas. And this application requires it and the building next to it to be demolished. And that's the first thing that we need to start with, with this discussion. Secondly, if you're going to demolish a building, and we can't stop them from doing that, then the next step is all the variances that are requested. They basically want to build out, you want to build out to the lot line. You want to overbuild the site. You want us to give you all the concessions for a building that, and I got to be frank with you, from the pictures that have been shown to me, it is not at all inspiring. It doesn't meet the historic character of the downtown. I have pushed this button, yes and no, over 10,000 times in seven and a half years. And I don't think that I've ever felt as passionate and as strong about wanting to deny a project than this. And, you know, it's, the downtown isn't a hopeless cause. And when you talk about it being a challenge, I understand that, but it's not blighted. It's not a bad area. And I guarantee you, I guarantee you, if we knock these buildings down and don't look at some adaptive reuse, there will be a time when we absolutely will regret that. We have very little history in this town.
So stipulated, Commissioner Evans. Nobody used the word "blighted" in any presentation here, number one. Number two, we use the word "redevelopment." That's all we said. And I wouldn't refer to that area as "blighted" in any form or manner. Number two, I think an assumption's being made that we'll destroy the houses. I actually asked staff.
The staff report says they will be demolished.
Well, that's not our intention. We'll be happy to move or donate, excuse me, the house of this historical importance. I think it was Andre's house after that. I think Andre lived there for years while I did all the rest of it.
They did, yes. It's a beautiful home.
Right, it's a beautiful home. And relocate it, donate it, relocate it, pay the cost of relocating somewhere within the historic district. We're not going to donate the land or any of those things, but we'd be happy to make that accommodation, to preserve that house. And I agree with you. I still miss the doings. But in any event, the other house, as far as I know, and I maybe ought to let the design professional speak to it, is pretty much uninhabitable and unsalvageable, as I understand it.
They're both habitable.
Say your name and your address.
Richard Kohler, 231 West Charleston Avenue. We toured the houses with the owner, and the inside of them, they're both habitable. They had been used previously as law offices recently, but they're now boarded up and have been for some time. That's an accurate statement. This property had received a prior approval for a different project. That, my understanding is the zoning still, or maybe just last, I don't know, on that approval, the prior approval. Staff might?
That prior approval, if I can stop you, was based on the representation of the applicant that the building, the Pop Squires home, would be preserved in its entirety and propped up on the third floor of what would have been an office building.
Right.
And I wasn't thrilled about that idea. The representation, and when it went to the City Council and went through here, based on the strong statements that the building would be preserved, it saw support. I didn't think it was economically viable, but it did see support. And there were, you know, City Councilmen, the mayor, and this commission, you know, made a lot of statements about the significance of the history. I'm not suggesting that people can't develop. I'm suggesting that cities all over this country look at historic properties and find ways to build on to them, to preserve them. And in the final analysis, it's not just a McOffice. It's, in many cases, something that's far more valuable than some vanilla building that in 30 years, you know, there's nothing architecturally substantial about the building. It also doesn't meet the character of the neighborhood. It's right across the street from the Art Deco High School.
Yes.
And which is in jeopardy of losing its status under the National Historic Register as a historic neighborhood. So I'm just disappointed that you haven't made any attempt to work with the additional building. It's just you look at a piece of land, you want to knock the building down and build an office, and then ask for all the variances associated with that.
I'd like to maybe explain some design intent, because I think, yes, Jeff's offer about the house and historic house, I think, was omitted.
It's nowhere in the report.
It may have been not a part of.
Conveniently, yes.
Well, I don't know if it was a part.
Well, it's a substantial connection.
We thought we were inheriting the prior, some of the prior.
Zoning.
Zoning stipulation. That's all I mean. That's all I could say.
I thought it was an all-new application.
It is. But now, having worked in that neighborhood, and maybe, because we worked, both Kelvin and I worked across the street, 701 Bridger, the developer developed 701 Bridger, we see the neighborhood differently than just a historic neighborhood. We see the Art Deco masterpiece of the high school is very important. But we also know that that's a special kind of a campus. It's not a normal school. They go to school there, but they perform. And so there's many after-hours activities, long past closing time of the school, with a high number, a high percentage of the population there. We think one of the reasons we designed the building the way we did was to make it safe, emphasizing that neighborhood, which it really hadn't been. I think I walked the area before Bridger, but when we anticipated during the Bridger project, the addition to it, which was begun about four years ago, if I remember, four, four and a half years ago. And the Bridger building at the time was pretty vacant. There were some, I guess you'd call them, historic homes next door on the joint lot that were demolished. And then we put the parking and the additional street-level retail there. And it did change the neighborhood of that, it changed the improved, I think, my meetings with the Las Vegas Academy, Friends of Las Vegas Academy, which is a parents' organization, seemed that they liked this. It was welcome because it made the neighborhood safer for their children who do stay, and then they put after-hours, after-school hours. And I think we looked at this parcel as being immediately across the street with a five-story residential building to the north, and a 100% build-out office building, and also the courthouse being a major presence. We don't, we think the neighborhood is in transition. I think that's the word Kelvin used. And we wanted very much to provide two things, which one was about the same we did at Bridger, was the ground-level retail, because we think that makes it a safer street, a safer place with the activity on the ground level. We think that makes the neighborhood better. We think that there's two levels above that in the picture here, seven residential units, which we were not able to do in Bridger, but we are able to do here, which will be a 24/7 presence. And we think that makes, again, a safer, more attractive neighborhood. We think it's a streetscape that is appropriate. We realize that there's some loss. But we think that when you look at what's there, a 10-story office building immediately to the courthouse, and a fourth-story office building adjacent to that, and five stories, the Bridger building and another five-story residential building.
Well, in respect, the residential building is not right there.
It is.
They're not on your site. Our code used to call for, and maybe it's changed, when you were building in these historic areas, it called for a residential character to the building, if you were making a professional building or something of that nature. And we required a number of projects to go back and kind of change it from an office-looking structure to a residential-type structure. And this, it was a residential lot, and it's...
It was four residential lots.
You know, your argument, what I'm hearing, and at least from my years being here, is that others in the neighborhood have, there are other large properties and other commercial-looking properties.
That's what we mostly see.
And I think we made a lot of mistakes in that area. And we hear the argument now that, you know, there's a project across the street that's pretty obtrusive, so we should be as well. This design may work somewhere else. I just don't think it works there. And again, I strongly believe that once you tear those buildings down, and once you reach, you change the character of the downtown, we will never, ever, ever recover it. And I think there's an economic value to working with an existing historic structure.
If I could jump in here for just a moment. I actually drove around that area just the other day and walked around. And I think you have some very valid points. But I didn't see any other vacant lots. I believe, I mean, if we looked at in that area, the houses there, attorney's offices, and there's different offices, and I think there's a bistro to the east, and they're vibing, there're things going. And with our design, certainly, we could make it more Art Deco and make it fit. So we're not opposed to that. But in placing the retail on the first floor, there are opportunities for, as Dick just mentioned, that some of these schools, some of the kids after hours, maybe one of the tenants, it's a studio where, you know, the kids can, can after-school go and perform, practice for upcoming events. It's not only office. The second and third levels are retail, and the office is only up on the fourth and fifth floors. So I think that's a, you know, one of the points we're trying to get across.
Commissioner Evans, I don't know if you can see it on the screen here, but they have considered the design criteria you questioned a while ago, and I apologize if we haven't answered it yet. If you look at the building facade or the architectural rendering and then compare it to the first, or the lowest picture that I just pointed to, bless you, the Loudoun Theater, and I'm sorry, I can't remember the name of the other theater that we just built, they just built on the campus there, that's more of a modern, and I'm not very good with all of this design language, but more of a modern Art Deco. And basically, I think what Mr. Kohler and Mr. Haywood were doing design-wise was designing a building here that fits in between that Art Deco and the old historical building of the school itself, was part of the design criteria. With that said, Commissioner Evans, we're more than happy to entertain, for obvious reasons, any suggestions in terms of the design facade that the council would like to see. I mean, we can always have the... design facade that the council would like to see. I mean, we can always have the discussion, certainly, and see where it leads. But by and large, the design factors have been taken into consideration of the local area. And I'd submit to you, Commissioner Evans, and again, you do a lot of good work on the commission here. I don't give my time here. I can give it elsewhere, but I'd submit to you, when I look at this thing, Commissioner Evans, I see it as being closer than any of the buildings that we provided you pictures, whether it's the Bridger Building, which is across the street directly from the Academy North on Bridger, or whether it's the building directly across the street to the west, which would be in between our proposed building, and I think it's the Christian Science Monitor Bookstore or something.
Christian Science Building.
The bookstore, yes. And I'm not trying to beg off, I certainly would never try to make an argument or advocate, we're not as bad as they are. So, except us, vote for us, or any of that. But I would point out that unlike those other buildings, I think a real effort's been made on the part of Mr. Kohler and Mr. Haywood to design this building in a form and fashion that would make it look compatible. And if we haven't quite gotten there in your eyes, please let us know. And secondly, I don't-
I don't need to let you, I mean, it's not quite got there. You're not even anywhere in the ballpark.
And that's fine. If you don't want to participate, that's fine, too. In terms of the application, I'm not, I don't know what is viewed by you folks as being omitted or not included. I would simply say that the offer is there.
You're asking for variances, and the burden is on you to prove that the variances are warranted. And I guess that's one of the places to begin. But aside from that, for me, there are a number of other issues, aside from the variance aspect. But I guess-
Well, if you want to move to your other issues, that's fine. I mean, I feel with the justifications provided by these gentlemen, more than support the request for the variances. You have twenty percent more parking than you would have, which is needed in the neighborhood. You have a nice design that, in my mind, is compatible with a lot of the other designer modern designs in the neighborhood. You have public safety issues being addressed by virtue of these residential and retail units. In fact, at the parent-teacher meeting on Tuesday, they expressed the concern. They call themselves the Friends of the Academy or something, that the kids should stay away from that side of the street, and that hopefully there would be development one day, so they wouldn't have to take the walk that apparently is considered dangerous, appears that way to me, to the 7-Eleven on 10th and Charleston. And every child at that school beyond the freshman year stays past the two o'clock time, basically, for extracurricular activities. So I think all of those concerns and justifications-
So you're suggesting, without your building, that there's a public safety issue?
I'm suggesting that with two vacant houses on that lot, sir, there is a public safety issue as we speak here. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. I've concluded my remarks.
Any more questions or comments? On this side? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. No more discussion on this. Item 35, I'll entertain a motion.
Well, if no one's going to make a motion, I absolutely will. And again, I think there are great opportunities in that area. And I'm just, this, to me, is not consistent with, you know, with what we want to see down there. And I don't, I haven't heard any good reason or justification for the variance. So, and my other disappointment, and maybe it's that the public doesn't know, we have these folks that came out, you know, about the Huntridge, and, you know, for those who don't know who Pop Squires was or the history of this building, it's one of the most significant and historic buildings in our city. So my motion would be to follow the recommendation of the staff on Agenda Item Number 35 for denial of the variance.
Motion on the floor to follow staff recommendation for denial. Please cast your vote. A yes vote is for the denial. And that motion has tied. I'll take a motion the other way.
In lack, we're going to probably hit the same vote, but I would move to, I would file for approval with staff's as if approved conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of Item 35. A yes vote is for the approval. Please cast your vote.
And that'll go forward. There's no recommendation to the city council.
Thank you.
Just two more.
Have a motion on Item 36, please.
I'll try on Item 36, move for approval with staff's as if approved conditions.
May I ask the clerk to clear the board, please? We'll revote. Item 36, there was a motion by Commissioner Dunham for approval. The yes vote will be for approval of Item 36. Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Evans, please.
And that motion is tied. We'll ask for a motion the other way on Item 36.
No.
Item 37. On Item 37, move for approval with staff's as if approved conditions. Motion on the floor for approval of Item 37. Please cast your vote for the approval. That motion is tied as well.
This matter goes forward to city council on November 5.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience.
Have a good evening.
Next item, Item 38. Item 38 is VAR 29748, applicant-owner Inspirato Apartments LLC, to allow a three-story building where two stories is the maximum permitted, and to allow building heights of 36 feet where 35 is the maximum permitted at the southeast corner of Lone Mountain Road, US 95. Item 39, SDR 29442, major amendment to-
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry. We will need to recall those. There needs to be a motion and an alternative on both of those, even though there were ties. I'm sorry. I should have said something. So if we can just, there has to be, it's in accordance with our rules, too, that there has to be a vote in the alternative if there's a tie.
Okay.
It's going to run the same way, but just to follow procedure.
We're going to beg our indulgence-
Will we just go back to Number 35?
While we take care of a little housekeeping.
Okay, 36, I'm sorry.
We'll go back to Item-
36.
36, and I'll need to have a motion to follow staff's recommendation for denial.
Then I would make that motion to follow the recommendation of our staff for denial.
Motion for, on Item 36, a yes vote is for the denial. Please cast your vote. Whoa, whoa, whoa. Can we clear the board and revote? Let's go ahead and vote again. Item 36. Please cast your vote. And that motion is tied. Item 37?
37, follow recommendation of the staff for denial.
I just did it again. Clear it, please. Is this okay? Thought this was the spending bill or something.
Commissioner Quinn, please.
And Commissioner Trowbridge abstained on all of those, and it all goes forward to council on November 5.
Thank you. Item 38, I read into the record. I'll read in Item 39, SDR 29442, major amendment to an approved site development plan review, SDR 25894, for a 252-unit apartment complex to allow three-story buildings. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the subject site was previously approved via site development plan review, SDR 25894, for a 252-unit apartment complex consisting of two-story buildings. The proposed major modification to the previous approved site development plan review consists of reorienting the parking lot layout, building layout, and clubhouse slash pool facility, as well as a revising of the proposed buildings to three stories in height with internal garages, and revising building elevations. As the proposed modification deviates from the development standards set forth for the medium-density residential zoning district, and our self-imposed staff cannot support the variances, and therefore is recommending denial of the variance and the associated major modification application. Please note additional letters of protest have been received for this item. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to abstain on this item. I have a partner on this property in the notice area.
So noted. Mr. Grohnauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and commissioners. Good evening. I'm Bob Grohnauer, 3800 Howard Hughes Parkway. I'm here representing the property owner and the applicant in this matter. I'm sure you're familiar with this piece of property. I stood before you about six months ago with respect to an application on this, which you approved, the land use applications, and subsequently, the city council also unanimously approved the applications, too. The reason why I'm before you tonight, there's two specific reasons. The first one is with respect to the variance, why we're standing before you, is there's simply an oversight issue between myself, the architect, in handing in the appropriate applications, or, excuse me, the appropriate elevations to the proposed project. It has been our intent, we discussed this with the neighbors as we went through the public hearing process, we also discussed this with the councilman in this area, that the intent has always been, on the previous site plan, that the buildings that were closest to Balsam would be two-story buildings, but the buildings that we were going to be proposing along the US 95 and Lone Mountain were going to be three-story buildings. So as they, as my client was finalizing plans over the last couple of months, with respect to the major modification that we have, I'll get into that. The thing that was picked up was that we didn't come in with an appropriate application, which would be a variance for a three-story building to allow, to be 36 feet, or 35-foot buildings would be allowed and be two stories. So we're asking for a three-story buildings at 36 feet, where 35 feet and two stories are allowed. Now, the point is, I do want to make is, because we, now I'm going to get into the site plan itself, but before I get into why we are making some of the changes, however, although we're asking for three-story buildings on the site itself, we have one of the buildings up here that's going to be a two-story building, as I'm pointing out here, and we also have a two-story building located right here. That is in, with respect to the two-story buildings that we agreed to as we were going through the public hearing process, and we made representations to. So again, the first part is just a clarification of a cleanup item that we did not submit the appropriate application when we went through the first time. The second application that's before you is Item 39. This is a new site plan review. Essentially, is in finalizing the plans, what our client has done is made some larger floor plans. They've added garages to the development itself. They cleaned up the circulation in the area. You have, some of the buildings have been condensed into bigger buildings instead of broken up in similar shape and size buildings. So with respect to those changes, and we've also removed some of the buildings further away from the residents here, because initially, we had some buildings, two other buildings, two-story buildings that were located in this area. So because of the several changes that we've made to the site plan, which has warranted the major site development plan review, so we'd ask you to approve the application. We're not asking for any more density. We can go up to 25 units to the acre. I believe when we were here before, we agreed to reduce some of the density. It came in about 23 units to the acre. And we're not asking for any parking variances. So we believe that we're still within the intent of what we represented through the process, but I'd explain to you, one, of the oversight, and two, because of the changes in finalizing our plans. We're ready to move forward with this application with the approval tonight, and I would ask you to recommend approval for both Item 38 and 39.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody in the audience want to speak for or against this item, please come forward. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Kenny Rogers. I live at 4668 Balsam Street. Mr. Chairman, commission, ladies and gentlemen. I think some of you may remember, I've been here before. I've been against this project from the very beginning, and now it just keeps on, on and on and on and on. They keep asking for more and more and more. They were granted already many, many things that we were against. Some of the people that lived there when we first started have subsequently left the area. One of my questions is, if they're going to have a three-story building, which we've always been against, and a two-story building was already okayed, how can they do that with only one foot difference in the height? Question number one.
We'll ask the applicant that question when he comes back up on the rebuttal.
All right. Also, I'd like to know where the heights for these buildings are taken from. Where are they doing their basic shooting? Is it from our street level in Balsam Street? They have copious amounts of dirt that's been hauled in there. And so I'm wondering where they're going to take that measurement from. We've been against this project from the beginning due to the fact that it's cutting off our view. I worked many years to get my little home, and then I find out in the newspaper that I'm living in a dilapidated neighborhood. This is taken from the Centennial View, the 23rd of this month, an article written in the magazine. I heard the word used before this evening, transitional. They're transitioning very well. They're moving all those people out. My home, if you can see on the monitor,
if I-
Yes, we can.
Show it there?
Perfect.
Is only seven months, seven years old. These pictures, if you would look on the back, were taken just by chance on the 8th of this month. This article is from the 23rd of this month. And it says, "We are in a dilapidated neighborhood, and we're in a transitional period." We're in a transitional period. This is true. But gentlemen, ladies, I ask you, try to think of us little guys a little bit. We've lost, every time we've been here and everything we've asked for, we've lost out. So according to my figures, which isn't very good probably, but 252 buildings, or, yeah, units, that amounts to .045 per unit of an acre. So I don't know how they figure all these things, but I'm asking you to give it some serious thought. They've already gotten everything they've asked for. They said that there would be no construction trucks going up and down our street, but all the time, when they have been leveling this land from houses that they've purchased, and the existing land is back there, there's construction trucks going up and down the street. They said that would not happen. We're now, as near as I can tell, according to this article also, we're on the fourth owner of this property since we started litigation here a long time ago. They said six months. I don't know if I feel like I've been here six years, but you can see our concern. If you allow this to happen, then the next time they come around, if they've already been, the project's been approved, next time they'll say, "Oh, we have some more plans here," I think we'll go four stories, because we can make it work. Gentlemen and ladies, I just ask you to give us some consideration. And in closing, I don't know what more to say. They say we're in a dilapidated neighborhood. My home is seven years old. I don't call that dilapidated. Dilapidated. My neighbor to the south, that home is 10 years old. It is an old development. That's true. As far as I know, it's somewhere around over 40, not 50, but over 40 years of age of this development. There has, all the old homes that were pretty well beat up after 40 years have been removed. We are no longer in a poverty unit. We are a very happy little community, but they have ruined our community. And I hope they don't ruin it anymore. So I ask you to please give it some serious thought, ladies and gentlemen. And I don't know what more I can say. I can say some more, but I could go on all night long when you talk about parking units. But anyway, could we get some clarification on the height of these buildings, where they're measuring from, and how they can get three stories with only one foot difference in the height of the building?
Thank you. Is that it?
That's it for now. Do I see what the gentleman has to say?
Next, please. I thought your neighbor wanted to speak.
That's my neighbor, Mr. Giegels, yes.
Yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, my name's Ben Giegels. I live at 4661 Balsam. I've lived there for 30 years already. And I'm with Mr. Rogers here about all the conditions that are going. In fact, I wanted to find out that when you, when you're going to reverse the city into, from the county- from the county to the city, do you have to have a notice to everybody in the block? We didn't get that. When you're going to improve a piece of property in the county and don't get no, don't get no permits to do it, are you allowed to do that? We didn't get no notice on that.
Yes, Mr. Rankin or Director Wheeler?
If I may, our records show that the annexation was done in 2005.
We never got a notice. We're just down the block coming.
Again, I can't-
Talking about 11 acres, the original-
No, we're talking about the houses that got improved. It's cards that have been improved.
Yeah. Oh, the houses at the south end of the, he's talking about the houses at the south end of the street.
I can't, I, I'm only talking about the subject property.
Yes. He's asking about property at the south end of the street that was transferred from city to county, I mean county to city property without our notification.
I don't, I-
Can't speak to that.
Chairman, I only have the information on-
Can't speak. All we have is the information that, that we have on this application tonight, not on those other pieces of property.
How do we go about finding out that if they got no approval?
You probably could get a card from Mr. Rankin, and he could probably guide you to, to, to the proper person to do the research on that, to find out the history of it.
Well, that was one of the items that I wanted to find out. That did happen to nobody in the block, or the whole area got notice of.
Right.
Because we've been getting notices about everything that had been happening-
But I think if I-
Ahead of time.
Maybe if I could, I think-
We'll defer to the city attorney.
I think since annexation affects only the property owner, I think only the property owner gets notice.
That is correct. There is no public hearing notification on annexations.
There is no public notice, because it really doesn't affect anyone else other than the person whose property is being annexed in.
Because these were properties that were, um, commercial office or something like that?
Right, but they were, but the only person who would be of interest that we would actually notice would be the person who actually requested the annexation, which more than likely would be the property owner. So, so not everyone gets noticed on annexations. It's only the property owner who's the most interested person.
Well, that's the way to go. I guess.
Thank you. You guys finished with your questions?
Another thing is that I, that I've lived there for 30 years, and I sit right in the back of the property that they're trying to put the three-story buildings. I'm in front of it. I came here and fought it because it was too high, and they took out the view, the mountain view. Now this other foot or whatever it is, I'm going to make it worse. Are we going to be sitting in a canyon out there hoping that we see the sun when it comes down in the evening or not? I don't, I don't like the project. I never have. I've been against it. It was forced on us by the developer that came in there three or four times ago, by coming in there and pushing us around like if we didn't have any property at all. They threatened us that they were going to go through all this other crap and, excuse me, and just sat right with few of us, and we fought it. Three or four of them went with the game and lost. I don't think they got the proper money for it.
Okay.
And that's about it. I'm with Mr. Rogers on everything else.
Thank you for your, your words. Mr. Farlow?
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. Dr. Scott, I have a question here. The state law of Nevada does not guarantee a view. Is that correct or not?
That's correct. We'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board on items 38 or 39? Seeing no questions, we'll entertain a motion. Or pardon me. Let me let this Gornauer come back. There were three questions. One was, where did the height of the building derive from? Where did you, or how did you come about measuring the height? And how come there are still construction trucks going up and down the street?
Yes, and I, and I would like to see, make sure staff and I are on the same page. With respect to the measurement of the buildings itself, it's going to be from finished grade, whatever that finished grade has been determined, unless if that's a different understanding from the measurement, but it's going to be from finished grade up to 36 feet if this application's approved for the three stories.
Gentlemen, I'd just like to say that there's enough dirt back there to raise that, if it was from the Balsam Street level, there's enough dirt back now to raise that at least six, maybe eight feet. So that's the reason I'm concerned about, where are they making this 35 or 36 foot, if you approve it, measurement from? He's saying wherever it ends up, wherever it, wherever it ends up. It can end up, who knows where?
I can answer, because this is what happened last time, if you recall, about six months ago. We were accused of having illegal dumping on the property, and I didn't know one way or the other if we had permits that were appropriate on the property. Just to refresh your memory, it was determined that there were appropriate permits for stockpiling on the property itself. We had the discussion at the public hearing here, and subsequently with Mr. Bob Eagle, and he was aware ahead of time, even though we're at the planning commission, that all the permits are appropriate out there for the stockpiling at that point in time. We would have to go through, and I believe, I don't know where we are on our drainage studies right now, because I have, my understanding is this pro, this application has been going through administratively for the permitting process, but you would have to go through your drainage approval. The drainage approval is going to establish the grade level with respect to the flows, and then from there, that's where I would presume, that's where you got your final grade. So what you see out there, you're not going to start building buildings on top of that, because that, that dirt will have to be removed at some point in time prior to the construction.
Thank you. Very good. Public hearing is now closed. Comments or questions from the board?
I'd like to-
Mr. Steinman?
Mr. Gornauer. Earlier, you said that there are going to be two buildings that are only 31 feet in height, something like that? And you pointed out where they are-
Yes.
-on the plan. And in the report, I'm reading, that of the 12 buildings on site, 11 are three-story, 36-foot, while one building is two stories, 29-feet. Is that incorrect?
That's, that's correct. If I, I might have been thinking if I said 31 feet, that might have been the previous two stories.
The point is, you pointed out two locations.
Yes, there's two locations. One is located right here on the corner of Loem Mountain on the entryway. This is a two-story. And this building located right here adjacent to Balsam is a two-story.
Okay, then the report appears to be incorrect, and we need to correct that. On page, page five of the variance, I'm, that's where I'm reading from, staff.
About the third line down or thereabouts. Maybe I'm reading wrong, but I want to just bring it up.
Mr. Chairman, this notice says 35 feet and 36 feet up.
Mr. Rogers, the public hearing is closed, so I'm going to ask you to refrain from, from chiding in. Thank you.
As you wish, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I should just-
Mr. Abbott?
I'm trying to sort this out to its simplest terms. We're asked for a variance to allow 36 feet, or 36, or 35 is the maximum, and a site plan, I believe, for a three-story product. Is that right?
Yes, if I may. The variance is not just for the building height. Again, a, a two-story building at 35 feet, you have a, your windows on the second story are considerably lower than three stories and 35 feet. So the issue is both the 36 feet and the three stories.
Okay.
I'll do, I'll do this.
Vice Chairman, Robert?
I, I, I can't really offer any explanation to Mr. Giegels or Mr. Rogers, but my heart goes out to them. You know, when you see an article in the paper that's written by someone that I don't know, and I haven't read the article, but when it says that your, your home is blighted or whatever in the world they, they use, that's, that's an embarrassing term. And then to hear that the neighborhood is in transition doesn't make me feel very good either. And when someone says, "Well, gosh, what we're doing is we're increasing the value of your land." You know, I understand that that's no condolence or consequence, or not going to make you feel any better when you, your home changes. Your home is your home. You know, you've got homes out there of your choosing on lots that simply are, pretty much irreplaceable in the valley nowadays. You aren't going to find lots that size anymore. Having said that, you know, they've already got a project that's approved at 35 feet. And if we say no to 36 feet, then they say, "Okay, we'll build them at 35 feet." The impact on you is going to be one foot difference, and I don't think that's going to make a whole lot of difference. You know, and I'm, I'm sorry, but that's a fact of life. You know, the, I, and that's, that's just how I feel about it. You know, the, your, your property is, is wonderful, and I'm, I'm not so sure I'd feel any different if I had a, an RE lot with my home on it and I had my chickens out back, and if that's what I wanted, you know, I grew up in a farm, and I, you know, my chickens were my pets, you know? And to have someone say, "Well, I'm going to put a high-density apartment building across the street," I'm going to say, "I don't like that." And it's really sad that there was errors made in initial applications that caused them to have to come back six months later and rip that wound open again and say, "Well, we want another foot out of the deal." And I understand that, and I'll just apologize on behalf of everybody involved in the process that ripped the wound open again for you. But the fact that it's just one more foot, I don't see that as being the hair that breaks the camel's back. You know, the, the project has improved at, at a density that would authorize them to build even more units than they are building. And the difference between 35 and 36, I, I don't get overly excited about it, more than just the disappointment at it being there in the first place.
Do I get any comment at all?
I, I don't think, Chair allowed.
I'd just like to say, we don't know where we're making the measurement from. That was, and the gentleman said, "We don't know." So there we are, you see? That one foot could be six.
But that's, but that's not a new issue. That was one that was, you know, when they built the pad, I remember the original discussion six months ago, there was lengthy discussions about water and flooding and coming down to your property, and somebody across the street there had to actually-
Sandbags.
...sandbagged the front of it. And so when they built it up to give themselves a, a proper base, that's when that occurred. And so that base was going to be there, whether it was 35 feet or 36 feet. So it's, it's an issue that is arguable, but when it's all said and done, 35 versus 36 on the same-sized pad, that makes-
Mr. Rogers, we're going to let staff chide in. I think they may have some additional information that'll-
Mr. Chairman, in regards to the number of two-story buildings, Building 1, which is eight units on the northeast corner, that building type, 1B, and the elevation submitted is a three-story building, which has also a two-story element on it. The other building, which is shown along the, the east property line, which is building type of 2A, is a three, is a two-story building. So the staff report is correct in, in regards to the number of two-story buildings.
Two.
The, the measurement from grade for the building height?
In regards to taking the building height, we establish it from the finished floor as regards to what the natural grade, and that's deferred to public works as far as the process on, on civil improvement plans and drainage studies.
Thank you. Any more questions or comments from the board while we're on this? Mr. Rankin and Mr. Gornauer, we know how many two-story and three-stories we have now?
I'm just reading the plan that I have in the site plan, and I, I'm going to just concur with staff, because my site plan says something different, but whatever has been submitted in there, I'll go with that.
Okay. Seeing no more questions or comments, I'll take a motion on item 38.
Make a motion.
Mr. Steinman?
Agenda item 38, VAR 29748, move for approval, subject to conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval of item 38. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining item 39.
Item 39, which is SDR 29442, move for approval, subject to all conditions.
Motion's on the floor for approval of item 39. Please cast your vote.
Commissioner Steinman, your vote didn't register.
Commissioner Quinn, could you please re-vote?
Steinman.
Oh, Steinman, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
And that motion has passed with Commissioner Truesdale abstaining.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal to the Office of the City Clerk within 10 days.
Thank you, Commissioners, and have a good night. Take care.
Thank you. Item 41, SUP 29293, applicant owner James R. Buell Jr. for a proposed 411-square-foot accessory structure, Class 1, with kitchen at 2908 Justice Lane. Is the applicant present? Please come, please come to the microphone, staff.
Mr. Chairman, the proposal meets all the requirements of Title 19.08. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Applicant?
Oh, please note there are additional, an additional protest and an additional support letter.
Thank you. Name and address for the record, please.
My name is Laura Bestor. Address is 2908 Justice Lane.
Are you in approval with all conditions and recommendations on the application?
Yes.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience would like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions on item 41? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion for approval for your beautiful home of SUP 29, 293, with all staff's recommendations.
Motion's on the floor for approval of item 41. Please cast your vote. A yes vote is for the approval.
Can we kick this around for a couple hours?
And that motion has passed.
And that goes forward to City Council on November 5th.
Thank you. Item 42, SUP 29394, applicant owner Jesus Martin Padrego for a proposed auto repair garage minor at 2331 North Martin Luther King. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, the proposed minor auto repair garage fails to meet the minimum conditional use regulations associated with such a use, and is further restricted by the limited commercial zoning district, as no outdoor storage is permitted. Therefore, the proposed use cannot be conducted in a harmonious manner with the surrounding development in the area, as the subject site has no internal garage bays or storage areas within the principal building. This is further exemplified by the past and present code enforcement citations related to outdoor storage of materials and performing of work outside of the building on the site. As such, staff has recommended denial of the special use permit. Thank you.
Thank you. Applicant?
Barto Chavez, 2439 High Vista Circle. On hearing behalf of the applicant, my client currently can sell rims and tires from the location, but he cannot repair them. And that's what he had been doing for the past, I believe, year or so, possibly even longer than that.
Longer than that.
And he was actually renting the property and actually ended up purchasing the property in November, December of last year, without the, without him knowing that he needed a special use permit, according to the client.
How did he not know?
He just to say, I don't think he got kind of swindled when he bought the property, because he was actually selling the tires and repairing them prior to him purchasing it for even longer than that. My client is aware he had been cited, or actually warned, code enforcement went out there and issued him a warning and told him that he needed to stop the repairs in the back, also needed to clean up the site, because it was just not appropriate for, for what he was trying to do out there. He had been warned several times. He's actually did remove all the tires. He wasn't able to remove the tires all at once, because he was recycling them, so they were being done in bunches.
So what about the rims that are still visible as-
He's, he, he has taken all the rims and everything and stored them back inside in the unit, and he had a security guard out there. They had the door open, and people still go by, because there was painted signs that say "open," and the security guard was telling them that they no longer can do any work until this process goes forward for him to be able to do the repairs and actually sell the tires. So he shut shop down completely. The, the issue came up just recently with Mr. Brooks liaison for Mr. Barto, that the, there was still activity going out there. While there wasn't activity, it just seemed so, because people kept driving up, the sign kept saying, it would still say "open," because it was painted on the, the wall. Since then, he has taken measures to go up there and paint it, remove that, so it can look like there's no activity whatsoever until he was able to process, or the process of the SUP move forward. His intent is to obviously pave the, the location, stripe it, and if this application goes forward and it gets approved, to move forward on, doing some type of tenant improvement to create the bay doors that are needed to have everything worked, all the work done inside the building. This future shop sales area is the area where they want to do it, but he won't, obviously he can't spend any money, because he would, you know, to improve it, because he's not, he's not sure that this would move forward at this time.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody who wants to speak for or against this item? Please come forward.
Thank you. Todd Farlow, 240 North 19th Street. I've been by this place, and it's a mess. It's a mess. It's a mess. Whatever you're seeing on the screen there, I mean, they cleaned that thing up, but I mean, the only thing that'll say this is dynamite and a bulldozer.
Would anybody else like to speak for or against this item? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Any comments or questions from the board?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Truesdale.
If you look at the amount of development that has happened in this, adjacent to this, I mean, the city and the county have invested millions of dollars in public facilities, and the only thing you see with all that, the only thing you see from the street is, you know, the tires, the window tinning. I don't know how you approve this and keep this here. I just don't see it as appropriate and couldn't support it.
Thank you.
I'd like to add a couple of comments. That when the county was moving forward with their development of that property and that building, they did use this portion of the site on that picture to the left where all those tires were as a staging for their construction. So while that was being done, it did look worse than obviously this gentleman just pointed out. It ended up ripping out a lot of that pavement, so he's very aware that he wants to come back and make it look presentable. Obviously, he cannot move forward and spend, you know, he's a small shop owner. He doesn't have much money for development, but if he can't move forward with any type of improvements, obviously, the special use permit doesn't get approved for him.
Well, I can tell you, the best that building ever looked was probably around nineteen seventy-seven when Mr. McNeil had it as Mr. McNeil's Quick Check. I used to walk around the corner as a kid because I grew up right around the corner from that store, and so, you know, Mr. Farlow had a good point, and, you know, that's about the only thing that's going to save that, especially with the... I can't tell you the amount of money Clark County School District spent on Booker Elementary School. That's a prototype, brand-new elementary school. Right behind that is now the Doc Pearson Community Center, which is still going through its multiple phase of completion. Once that gets done, the only two eyesores in this corner is... Well, there's actually three. There's actually this building. There's actually Rudy's Garage to the north of this one, and then across the street to the east, you've got Old Night Train's Club that I believe couldn't pass an asbestos inspection today. And so, and I just don't see your client putting the money in that building to put in bays and hydraulics and all to make it what we probably would be envisioning as a acceptable type of mechanical use in there. I just don't think he can get it to the specifications we want.
He... Obviously, right now, he cannot. He wouldn't spend the money because he can't do it because there's no special use permit for him to even move forward. If he doesn't have the opportunity to move forward and actually, with the understanding that the city would allow this to move forward as a special use permit for him to be able to do that type of work, then the building will stay as is until he sells it off to the next person, or he does whatever. Obviously, he can't do anything. He can continue to sell the tires and the rims out of the shop without doing anything to the building. By approving the special use permit, it'll at least give him an opportunity to come back and make the improvements to the building, and that won't be such an eyesore. But if he doesn't get approved, then it stays as is, and he just sells tires and rims out of it.
Well, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if there are no comments...
I just want to ask, if we would approve this, doesn't he have to come back for SDR if he changes this building?
No. He's got plans in here, but I see no renderings of anything.
No. I mean...
That's a sign.
You can't just let him tear down the front of the building, put up a couple of garage doors, and so on. I can't... Don't think we can do that.
I'm ready for a motion on item forty-two, please.
I would think it would just be a tentative improvement for the inside of the building.
It affects the outside of the building.
Mr. Chairman, based on staff's recommendation, I move for denial.
Motion on the floor for denial of item forty-two. Please cast your votes. And that motion has passed for denial.
And that denial is final action in the absence of an appeal to the office of the city clerk within ten days.
Thank you.
Item forty-three, SUP 29439, applicant Sujata Mocharla, owner of NG Family Trust for a beer/wine cooler on sale establishment within an existing restaurant and a waiver to allow a zero-foot distance separation from a religious facility where four hundred feet is required at six-eight-four-zero West Sahara Avenue. Did I pronounce your name?
Mocharla. Not Mocharla.
Forgive me. Well, after this meeting, come with me. I'll take you to some street signs you had a problem reading. So, yes. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, staff is unable to support the requested waiver and is recommending denial. Please note, we haven't received additional protests and support letters.
Thank you. Applicant, name and address for the record, and I am listening closely.
Yes, sir. She's Sujata Mocharla.
I said that kind of close, huh?
Very close.
Okay, cousin. Go ahead.
I'm Sudhakar Mocharla, and we are starting a restaurant. We came from California. We moved over here about ten months ago, and we found a beautiful building over there in the corner of Sahara and Rainbow, and we want to have a fine dining restaurant because we are in the restaurant business for the last twenty years in San Francisco. And my children are moved here. They are medical doctors here, so we moved over here, too. And we want to start this restaurant, and we want to have a wine and beer license for that. And my very next restaurant is the Asia at Buffett. They have all the liquor license also along...
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt for a moment? Is this a special use permit for a beer and wine in association with a restaurant, or is it a separate?
No, no, it's in the restaurant. In the restaurant.
Is this within Buffet Asia?
Next door.
Next door.
Next door, very next door.
Is that that shiny one that was the Mom and Pop diner?
No, no, no. It was a...
This is a diner.
It was a bakery diner before.
Gotcha.
Don't we generally recommend approval for special use permits when beer and wine are an incidental part of a restaurant?
If I may, Chairman, the issue is here with regard to staff's recommendation is that a waiver is necessary because of the religious facility that is on the same property.
Okay.
It is almost...
More than four hundred...
Feet and a half.
This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Vice Chairman Trowbridge?
My observations in regards to the church being there is that I believe there's at least four restaurants that exist in that same shopping center, and those restaurants were in existence prior to the church going into business. And I somehow think that because the restaurants were there first, they claim right to serve alcohol. If it was the other way around, where the church was there first, and someone came forward, wanted to put alcohol, then I'd say no, but because the restaurants were there first, even though they're changing owners, it makes no difference. I think that that site is entitled to have alcohol with food. So if there's any... No other discussion, I'm willing to make a motion regarding special use permit, twenty-nine four thirty-nine. Approval, subject to all staff recommendations.
Motion's on the floor for approval of item forty-three. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And that goes forward to City Council on November fifth.
Thank you so much.
What kind of food?
Indian food.
All right.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Item forty-four, SUP 29448, applicant Yashiva Day School owner Village Square Shopping Center LLC for a proposed private school primary at nine-four-two-zero West Sahara Avenue, Suite 201. Staff?
Staff finds the use compatible with the surrounding land uses and recommends approval. Please note, we have received additional protest and support.
Applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. Gary Leobald, twenty-five ninety-two Canadian Goose in Henderson. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Yashiva School. What the applicant is planning on doing is to have a small, private school that will operate on the second floor of one of the office buildings in the ground-floor retail, second-floor office buildings in the existing Village Square Shopping Center. And if you can hear me from the distance...
Mr. Leobald, do you agree with the staff's assessment?
Yes, we're... We thank staff for their support, and...
Thank you.
We ask for your approval, too. I guess I can cut it short, then. This is a public hearing. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this? Please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll entertain a motion on item forty-four.
I'd like to make a motion with regards to special use permit, twenty-nine four four-eight. Recommend approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion on the floor for approval. Please cast your vote.
Mr. Leobald, when you were with the city, I don't think you had such a nice suit.
It's not mine.
And that motion has passed.
And that goes forward to City Council on October fifteenth.
I just want to make one point of clarification so we don't have an issue later on for a building permit. I noticed the suite number is mentioned in the header as being 201. It's shown as 200 in the staff report. I believe, in fact, it's 202, but they're all internal off the same hallway internally within the building, and the street address is correct. It's invisible to the outside, so I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Thank you very much. Enjoy. Item forty-five, SDR 28321, applicant owner Habad Hebrew Center for a proposed church, house of worship synagogue consisting of two two-thousand-eight-hundred-square-foot one-story modular buildings on the south side of Vegas Drive, approximately one-thousand-one-hundred feet west of Durango Drive. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, please note that there is a revised staff report and supporting documents with correct date stamps that can be found in the backup package. The proposed project, use of building materials and quantity of landscape materials fails to create a development that is harmonious with the surrounding development in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending denial. If approved, staff would like to revise condition number one, as submitted to the clerk, to reflect a time period of five years instead of two, as well as revise condition number two, as submitted to the clerk, to reflect a date stamp of eight eighteen of oh-eight. In addition, staff would like to delete condition number five. Please note, the additional letters of protest and support have been received. Thank you.
Applicant?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm sorry, it's still evening. Mark Leboin, ninety-eight-one West Sahara, representing the applicant. Answer any questions that you'll have.
Well, tell us a little bit about your request.
Over there, please.
The applicant has purchased approximately two acres near the corner of Vegas and Durango Drives. Their intention is to build a permanent facility for the Habad, but because of the amount of money that it'll be necessary, they'd like to begin with a temporary facility to serve their congregation. So we're proposing improvements that can eventually be part of the eventual facility. So the parking lot would be a fully improved parking lot with landscaping, access from Valley Vegas Drive. The modular buildings are two small one-story buildings, stucco exteriors with a metallic roof that looks like tile to blend in with the residential units, residential homes on the other side of Vegas, and that gives us plenty of room for the future facility.
Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody in the audience for or against this item? Please come forward. Mr. Farlow?
So are these modular buildings, are they permanent or what, or temporary?
You know what Mr. Quinn...
And we know what Mr. Quinn would say. He's gone now.
Nothing more permanent than a temporary building.
Temporary building, right.
That's not what Mrs. Quinn says.
If they're a temporary thing, I mean, how long are they going to be here before they get moved off? That's...
We'll get your answers to those questions. Would anybody else like to speak on this? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. I'll ask the applicant, can you answer that question? Are these temporary, and how long are they going to be there?
They're absolutely temporary. We're requesting a period of five years to acquire the funds for the permanent facility.
Thank you very much. Any comments or questions from the board?
Seeing none, I'm ready to make a comment and a discussion.
We will have a...
Okay. Just by virtue of comment, this is the... Starting off with modular units is the exact same process that Saint Elizabeth and Seaton use just a few blocks away.
Yes, sir.
That's just typically how it's done. Based upon the reputation of the Habad in the area, I have a synagogue five-hundred feet from my home, and it's a wonderful operation. So based upon that, I'd, in regards to special, item number forty-five, Site Development Review twenty-eight three twenty-one, make a recommendation for approval, subject to all staff conditions.
Motion's on the floor for approval of item...
If I may, there was recommended changes already read in by staff?
Yes, with the modifications to the conditions as read into the record by staff.
And a question as to whether or not the commission wishes to add a condition that the temporary structure shall be removed five years from date of final approval, based upon the testimony of the applicant.
Absolutely. I thought that was understood.
That would be added then additionally.
So motion on the floor for approval with the added and amended condition. Cast your vote. And that motion has been approved.
And that is final action in the absence of an appeal within ten days to the office of the city clerk.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Have a great night.
SC lost the game, by the way, Mr. Chairman.
Did they?
Out, out.
Thank you.
I'm sure Ms. Lazovich didn't make it home, and Ms. Wheeler may be spending the night here, too. Item forty-six, under Director's Business, TXT two-nine-five-four-seven, applicant owner of City of Las Vegas, discussion and possible action to amend the Lone Mountain Master Development Plan and Design Standards Document and the Lone Mountain West Master Plan Development Plan and Design Standards Document to allow wireless communication facilities stealth design as a conditional use in the neighborhood, commercial, and village, commercial districts. Staff?
Mr. Chairman, this will bring those master planned areas into compliance with federal standards regarding cell towers and allow for a conditional use, and if they don't meet the conditional use, of course, then it would come forward as a special use permit. Staff does recommend approval.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Anybody like to speak on item forty-six? Please come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. Comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, we'll take a motion on item forty-six.
So I could, just by way of comment, this is a change to the Lone Mountain Master Development Schedule as well as the Lone Mountain West Master Development Schedule, and changes to those things I personally don't take lightly and researched a little bit, and the changes that are being presented are mandatory to remain in compliance with the Telecommunications Act of nineteen ninety-six, where you cannot discriminate and unreasonably prohibit effective wireless services. And so we really have no choice. It's a matter of just staying within compliance with the law. It does provide for staff review to process the things quickly if they meet certain standards which are outlined in the document, and if they don't meet those fairly clear standards, they cannot be approved. And I still believe they must come before the planning commission and go on to the City Council for consideration. So based upon that, I'd make a recommendation for approval for Agenda Item Number forty-six, TX Amendment twenty-nine five forty-seven.
Mr. Chairman, one comment because I...
Mr. Truesdale?
The federal requirements for the Telecommunications Act does provide for a community to impose greater standards for maintaining the quality and environment within their community without restricting wireless, and I would suspect that in some of the planned communities, the city's basic waivable standard is probably a little less than some of the other communities' specific standards. So I just raise that because I think we tend to get stealth having pine trees stuck in the middle of a street or a flagpole, you know, back of a warehouse. I don't think that's what was meant by all of the standards that were out there.
Very good. There is a motion on the floor for approval of item forty-six. Please cast your vote. And that motion has passed.
And that'll go forward to council in ordinance form.
Thank you. Our next item is citizens' participation. Citizens' participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the Planning Commission. No subject may be acted upon by the Planning Commission unless that subject is on the agenda and is scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, come to the podium, give your name and address for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speaker is allowed, may be limited. Mr. Farlow?
Todd Farlow, two-forty North Nineteenth Street. Commissioner Evans, one of the things that never ceases to amaze me, with all of the vacant land throughout the downtown area and properties that should be bulldozed, why these people come and wanna take our historic houses and bulldoze them? It just, it just never ceases to amaze me.
Thank you for your comments. The meeting has now been adjourned. Thank you.